Good evening and welcome to the June 16th regular meeting of the Planning Commission. Could we please have the roll call?
Commissioner Fresco?
Here.
Commissioner Fonda Bernardi?
Here.
Commissioner Lurt?
Yes, here.
Um, sorry, actually, can we have folks who are not the commission, please turn off their videos? Thank you. Uh, Commissioner, oh Pastor is not here yet, Commissioner Raskin? Commissioner Raskin?
He looks frozen.
Yeah.
No, he blinked.
Oh, wait. Commissioner Raskin, can you hear us?
Here, I, I can hear you.
We can't hear you.
I'm gonna take that as a yes, um, hopefully he can come back to us. Uh, Commissioner Reese?
I'm not how sure how I top that, but yes, I'm here.
And Chair Landris.
Yeah, I am certainly here. Um, before we, before we go to the planning directors' report, uh, I just want to say to everybody who's, uh, well, I have two things. The first thing I want to do is say that I believe that we have met every single week with the exception of one week since, starting on May 5th. And I want to acknowledge, um, the amount of time and energy that the commission has put in over the past few weeks. And, um, more importantly, perhaps, the amount of time and energy that staff has put in to delivering, um, to delivering these meetings and doing all the work between the meetings that is necessary, uh, for everything that happened. And on top of that, uh, delivering a draft housing element to the council, uh, which was approved at something like 12:30 a.m. last night. Um, so, and then they got up and started all over again because there are multiple agenda items tonight. So, um, in the spirit of two things, one gratitude to everyone. Uh, I want to acknowledge that and acknowledge that, um, that there's a lot of work and a lot of exhaustion. Um, and a request, and please hold me to this request as well. I'm not asking something that I don't want to be held accountable for too. Um, let's say what we need to say, uh, all of us, staff, commissioners, presenters, public commenters, in, um, the least number of words we need to get our ideas across. Uh, because we have been going, uh, we're, we're all running on.
We get it, Sean, let's move on.
Perfect, exactly, just like that, Nina. Um, and I also would like to ask, uh, for the commission's permission, move item 10A up above, uh, item, uh, item 8A, so that we can, um, move that out of the way relatively quickly and not take it up at the very end of our meeting. That is just a brief update, um, on housing element and what's happening moving forward. So if there could be a motion to move item 10A to appear prior to item 8A, that would be much appreciated.
So moved.
Is there a second? Oh, got it, okay, could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner, um, Fresco?
Yes.
Commissioner Fonda Bernardi? Commissioner Lambert?
Yes.
Commissioner Raskin?
Yes, can you, uh, all hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Perfect, thanks.
Commissioner Reese?
Commissioner Reese says yes.
And Chair Landris.
Yes, and I think we should all wave at the screen so that we know that there's somebody watching for a wave there.
He is, yeah.
Good, alright, um, David, how about this planning director's report?
Good evening, commission. Waiting for the slide to come up. So coming up at the commission's next meeting on July 7th is the, um, Shore Hotel Project. Uh, we've canceled the July 21st meeting. Um, give the commission and staff much deserved time off. Um, August 4th, we have a conditional use permit at 1640 14th Street. Um, more discussion on the draft, um, housing element and is focused on the EIR. And then that same night, we'll also be bringing a discussion about the promenade visioning process that's been going on. There's a group of people that have been meeting, working with, uh, consultant, MIG, um, to come up with some recommendations on, um, some quick changes we can make to the permitted uses along the promenade and then some more long-term things that we'd like to, uh, talk to the commission about and get your feedback before we go to council, uh, later in the month in August. Uh, city council action, so June 8th, the council passed the, um, extension of the, um, outdoor programs. Um, the, you know, parklets, um, parking lot dining, outdoor sidewalk dining that we've, um, been able to accommodate during the pandemic. Um, there's a big push and desire to keep a lot of those things, um, around as we come out of this and, uh, the council enthusiastically endorsed those concepts. Um, last night, as, um, Chair Landris mentioned, the council, um, reviewed the draft housing element and, and approved it, gave us direction to move forward. Um, I also, um, wanted to take the opportunity to, uh, thank the commission for all your work on this so far, but also, um, the staff work, um, you know, Commissioner Land, or excuse me, um, Chair Landris said it very well. I think in the same thing, um, not only a marathon night last night for Jane and her staff, um, but then, um, you know, they're, they're back tonight with a very full agenda and projects that are really, um, important and meaningful. So, um, kudos to staff and again, thanks to the commission for that. And then, um, upcoming on June 22nd, uh, council adoption of the biennial budget. Um, I think I talked last time about, um, the things that the commission had supported and I think most of those are at least in the recommendation and we're, we're hoping that they will move forward. Um, housing element update, and we're gonna talk about that next, I won't spend any time on that. Uh, reopening updates, um, June 14th, yesterday, or excuse me, Monday, uh, we went from, um, two days, um, of in-person counters, appointments to four days, so now Monday through Thursday, uh, people can make appointments to come to the counter. Um, so that's been going really well and again, thanks to staff for setting that up. Um, last thing I wanted to mention, um, was that, as I'm sure you've all heard, um, John Delilah is, is coming on board as our interim, uh, city manager as Lane is, is leaving. Uh, John's been in the, in the building the last, um, few days and getting reacquainted with city hall. I think some of you probably remember John and worked with him when he was here before. Um, but, um, we're looking forward to working with him. Um, he's, he's a planner by background, so he certainly understands the work that, uh, we do and that you do. And I think he'll, um, will be in good hands, um, for the time being as we continue to look for a permanent city manager. So that concludes my report and happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, David, any questions? Just want to make sure that all commissioners got their reminder from Melissa to, uh, to let us know if there are dates over the summer that you will be out of town as we are working hard to make sure we know whether we are quaret for the meetings that are scheduled. So, um, if you haven't already done that, please, uh, let us know as soon as possible, um, when you, when, when you plan to be away and if it affects, uh, a planning, your attendance at a planning commission meeting. Uh, Leslie? No, okay, alright, so now let's move on to, as agreed, um, to, let me, let me just do the, um, the announcements piece here. Uh, so, uh, please note tonight's procedures for public comment. We have accepted oral public comment registration by phone through the pre-registration system, which was noted on the agenda. Registration for oral public comment closed at 3:30 p.m. today, two hours prior to the meeting. Uh, if you are a member of the public who registered for public comment, please check your email for column instructions. Those instructions were emailed at the start of this meeting. Written comments received up until noon today have been read by the commission. Comments received after 12 p.m. today will be considered part of the record of the proceedings, but will not be posted online with the planning commission's agenda. Might not be reviewed by the planning commission and will not be read aloud during public comment during the meeting. Uh, as a reminder, uh, if you're with us on BlueJeans, uh, the moderator chat function is for technical help from administrative staff only, it is not for public comment. The commission cannot see, uh, what is entered into the moderator chat and comments will not be forwarded to the commission or entered on the record. Uh, are there any other announcements from commissioners? I don't see, yeah.
Commissioner Pastor, and I am now here live and in attendance.
Excellent.
For the record.
And, and I just, while, since you are now here, I just want to thank you for your comments last night to the city council. Uh, Melissa and I represented the commission and, um, gave a report on, uh, all the things we talked about, uh, in our June's technical meeting.
An amazing job of like fielding questions and very competently and intelligently for hours and they should be applauded.
Over and over again. Uh, and so with that, let us move on to update discussion on the housing element update, um, including action taken by the city council last night. Uh, any project updates and upcoming milestones? Um, Jane, can I turn it over to you for that?
Um, yeah, uh, thank, thank you very much for the kind words. Um, again, want to acknowledge that, that the commission's very hard work and, uh, taking journey with us. Um, so, uh, what, what the council did last night is, um, uh, voted for, I believe the final vote was for one, um, to transmit the draft housing element, um, to HCD. Um, they, you know, were, were very much, I think, supportive of the direction the planning commission, um, are recommended on, on the housing element. And I'll, I'm, I'm just gonna hit some of the highlights, uh, mostly because there, there were, there were changes that we don't need to get in all of them. Um, with respect to the affordable housing overlay, they did agree with the commission in terms of, uh, not doing the citywide 80% AMI overlay and they were supportive of the moderate income overlay, um, with the change that it is, um, uh, for 100% moderate income projects, um, and that the bonus is 50% as opposed to unlimited, so that there was a distinction between those, um, incentives and that for up to 80% AMI. Um, and then I think just to clarify, those are in targeted areas of the city, so not everywhere, um, in the city. So downtown Bergamot and kind of the half mile around the 17th Street Station. Um, uh, another change had to do with the, um, baseline AHPP. So instead of the 10%, um, the council actually, um, uh, directed the 15% across the spectrum of units. Um, so that, you know, will result in more, um, affordable housing and, um, you know, together with that, they also looked at the FARs that would support that. Um, and that was also part of the direction. Um, on Cityland, um, that was pretty much the same in terms of committing it for 100% affordable housing, but they added just the additional consideration that it's not just housing, it could also be other communities, community serving purposes, like green space, um, place making or community serving commercial uses. Um, they were particularly thinking about, um, things like entrepreneurship opportunities for, um, local residents and the like. So that's, that was part of their discussion. In the R1, um, they agreed with the commission in terms of the remove and replace of our program for the, um, the language remained largely unchanged, if I recall. Um, so that was, um, the, the council's direction there. For ADUs, they also agreed with the expansion of program 1G in terms of the additional unit, be restricted as rental units, um, so that moved forward. Um, in terms of the adaptive reuse of existing commercial, um, they agreed with the commission in terms of, um, including duration for artists and with work as well. Um, agreed with the sustainable construction, um, uh, and innovation, uh, program and they added, um, actually environmental justice that protects public health to that, um, program as well. Um, and let's see, what else? Uh, they discussed the anti-displacement, um, uh, program. Uh, this is the kind of local, you know, continuation of SB 330 after it's sunsetting in 2025. And then they discussed also surface parking lots. Um, these are those, uh, parking lots associated with the boulevard facing commercial use. Um, and I think they were quite specific and, you know, wanting to make sure that, um, some of those, uh, A lot regulations that would be a barrier to housing, like, you know, you can't put the replacement commercial parking, you know, as an example, like those be, um, uh, are reviewed and evaluated, you know, essentially remove those kinds of barriers so that, um, it would be a reality to, um, uh, incentivize housing on those surface parking lots, um, you know, in neighborhoods without displacing, um, existing tenants. So I think I've kind of covered the highlights. Um, David, I'm not sure if there's anything else that I might have missed in that, um, but.
They capped them, they capped the market rate for, they capped the market rate for religious congregations at 50%.
Oh, that's right, yes, yes, that's right, yeah.
Yeah, gee, I think you, you've covered it well. Don't have anything else. Commissioner Lambert, Leslie, yeah?
Um, I just wanna, um, echo what, uh, Chair Landris said, you guys are absolutely amazing. I mean, I don't know how you keep going. Your presentation last night was phenomenal and the questions that you had to answer were really difficult. Um, it was a euphemism. And I, I just want to express my appreciation for all that you've done and the fact that you're still here is amazing.
Thank you so much, I'm barely here, but here.
Uh, before we go to questions, I just wanted to ask Jane to give us a quick roadmap of what's coming. So we're all in.
Sure, so, so what's next is, um, the team is now working on, um, taking the, uh, we're actually just, you know, looking through the, the PC, Plan Commission addenda, the changes made by council. Um, and we will incorporate all of those changes, um, into the draft elements. So we'll essentially be revising, um, the entire draft, um, before the transmittal to HCD. Um, so what you'll expect to see is, um, a red line, um, of the changes and then a clean version. Um, we won't be doing the red line in kind of the presentation view because it's kind of like a formatting nightmare. So we'll be doing that probably in the word documents, it'll be more like a text red line. But you'll, you know, you'll be able to see all of those changes. Um, and the council actually asked, you know, that that be transmitted to them, um, whatever, you know, the, the version that they recommended, that that be transmitted to the council. So we will be doing that, um, and we would, you know, also alert the commission, you know, when we have that complete. Our target is to have, um, that to HCD, um, by July 1. Um, and then that will then trigger the 60-day review period, um, so they have up until, um, uh, September 1st, um, to, you know, formally return comments to the city, um, on that draft. And then, um, council requested last night that they would like to have a review and a discussion of that before they take a final adoption. Um, so we haven't quite figured out those dates yet, but it's gonna, you know, once we get those comments back, it's going to be again, a pretty rapid series of events, um, to come back to the commission and council, you know, in some sort of study session format before we move forward to final adoption. Um, and I think as we said before, our intent is to also bring forward implementing ordinances at the same time. So it'll be a busy fall, um, as we move forward, you know, towards final adoption.
What's the deadline for final adoption, the 15th?
October 15th, yeah.
Sorry, when are you gonna have the next draft with that, uh, on the red line?
Um, I think we, the, probably, it, it'll be before July 1st, so hopefully sometime next week maybe, or if not, maybe early the week after, yeah.
And what's your transmittal deadline if the adoption deadline is the 15th?
Um, the transmittal, well, the adoption deadline is the 15th and then trans, so adopt to transmitted before then. So as long, it, it just requires that the council, you know, adopt something, um, before the 15th and then transmit. Um, so it's the same date.
Can you transmit three days after they adopt if they adopt on the 12th of October?
We will, we will.
No, okay, so I'm just looking at the number, I mean, because we're, 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 um, you know, there is a, there is a Yom Kippur problem on September 14th, um, and 15th, or not, depending on how you feel about Yom Kippur. Sorry, the 15th and 16th. Um, but then I'm assuming that we should all be prepared to be meeting, uh, like, a lot, uh, between the 22nd and the, and the.
Yeah, that's part of why we were trying to get a sense of, yeah, your, your summer schedules and looking forward at, um, you know, meeting dates in September, though.
Okay. Great. I saw hands before from Jim and Nina, I think.
I'm, I'm, never mind.
Yep, okay, uh, Alice, Commissioner Raskin?
And, uh, just checking again, can you all hear me all right?
We can.
Perfect. Yeah, just one, one quick food for thought, you know, last night, the, I think all council members made the comment that, um, they would like to see the first floor of buildings on publicly owned land used for something that's not housing and activated it in a way that either brings in some sort of, um, community-centered space or, or something. The, the challenge for us as a city is that, uh, under the Surplus Land Act, we can't rent out city-owned land for profit-making purposes. But I think, uh, you know, over the next few months, we should all collectively think creatively about how we can use those spaces in an effective way, uh, consistent with the Surplus Land Act. Um, and, um, you know, I don't have any, any answers right now, but, uh, just throwing that out there for us all to think about.
I would, um, I'll just respond to that quickly and then throw it to Leslie. Um, to, uh, uh, Councilmember De La Torre mentioned Mercado La Paloma as an example and I would say, um, you know, one thing that commission was successful in securing some money for out of the, out of the Miramar DA, uh, you know, is moving forward with this, uh, community kitchen model at, uh, Virginia Avenue Park. And so if you could think of a more expansive version of a community-centered incubator. And so if you could think of a more expansive version of a community-centered incubator, um, where the, the city maintains ownership and then hires an operator to facilitate those kinds of economic activities, it's not treated in the same way, and it is consistent with, um, with public guidelines for, uh, use of public land. That's just one concept to think about.
Other question, um, Jing, um, when the staple is back with the comments, good and bad, are we pretty, we have very little latitude in terms of changing, do we?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, it's, it's hard to speculate, right, until we, we see what the comments are, um, based on, you know, we, we've been kind of tracking letters from other jurisdictions. It seems that a lot of it sometimes it's like, you know, more information or clarity on analysis or what have you. Um, sometimes it might be more, you know, prescriptive, but, um, we really won't know until we get, you know, the, the comments back as to, you know, how we might address them. Um, but, yeah, they, the, the, the city's required to, to consider the comments.
I, I guess my point is, I, I don't really see a whole lot of deliberation by any of us once we get HCD's comments, because we either recorporate and, you know, buy by them while we don't have a compliant housing. Am I misreading that?
Well, I think it's, they, uh, again, it's hard for me to say, and, you know, until we get comments back as to, um, how we might respond, there, there may, their comments may raise questions that we want to discuss, um, you know, with you, um, and with the council, uh, but I just, I don't want to say that it's, you know, going to be straightforward necessarily, so...
And just a reminder to everyone and to the public that the, um, EIR for the, for the, uh, for the housing element will be released, uh, in a couple of weeks. Uh, the comment period will open, will be open for all of July, I believe, and, uh, this, we will review that EIR on August 4th. So even while we're waiting for HCD to respond to the draft housing element, we will be studying the EIR. So, all right, are we ready to move on to item 8A? Okay, uh, so next up we have item 8A, uh, well, our consent calendar, um, and so item 8A is on consent, um, and, uh, this is 1650 Euclid Street, 19 ENT dash 029, 20 ENT dash 0166. Let us start with, uh, expartes, and we can just sort of go in order here. Uh, Commissioner Fonda Bernardi?
Uh, none.
Commissioner Fresco?
Um, yeah, I talked with the applicant on June 14th, at which point I realized that the applicant was a donor to the Santa Monica Conservancy, which is a nonprofit organization on which I serve on the board, and then I consulted with our city attorney about any potential conflicts and, uh, because we are a non, I'm a non-paying board member, uh, as I noted to our attorney, I actually pay a lot of money to serve on that board. Um, and, uh, this project has nothing to do with historic preservation, it's just, uh, another kind of project altogether. I felt that I do not have a conflict of interest, but I wanted to share all of that thinking.
Hello?
I'm none.
Commissioner Pastor?
We're on 8A, right?
8A.
Um, yeah. Uh, I just had a Zoom call on Monday of this week with the applicant's representative, um, and the applicant's architect, and, um, members from the applicant themselves. I think our call was probably 30 to 45 minutes, and they presented the project to me, and I asked some questions, and that's it.
Commissioner Raskin?
Yeah, on Wednesday, June 9th, I, uh, had a Zoom meeting with the project applicant team. They shared a presentation about the project, uh, answered a few questions, and I have also walked past the site on numerous occasions.
Commissioner Reese?
Other than having walked by the site on numerous occasions, I have nothing to report.
Uh, and I, uh, had, um, far sponsored with the applicant team, uh, uh, well, with, with, uh, the applicant's representative, uh, leading to a meeting on June 15th, um, with, uh, Mr. Laffer, Mr. Kelly, Mr. Breland, Ms. Jaregui, Mr. Mandari, Mr. Korth, uh, and, uh, they answered my questions about the project. And, uh, I, uh, that's it. And I recently learned that, um, the history of talking about how many times we walked past or drove past a project only goes back about 20 years. Um, but it's good to know when we've been there. Uh, with that, uh, is there anyone who wants to pull this item from consent? We have no callers in the queue for a public comment. All right, does someone want to move the consent counter? I see Mario, Mario?
Moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Great, moved by Fonda Bernardi, seconded by Reese. Could we have a roll call, please? Uh, Mr. Korth, please turn off your micro, your video.
Commissioner Fresco?
Yes.
Commissioner Fonda Bernardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert?
Yes.
Commissioner Pastor?
Yeah.
Commissioner Raskin?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Chair Landris?
Yes, so that passes 7-0, and we are moving on. Uh, great, so we are now on to item 9A. Uh, let's see, um, I want to note that item 9A has been continued and is being further continued by staff to, uh, July 7th. Uh, Heidi, do we need to take a vote on this continuance?
Uh, no, since, uh, it was continued by staff already.
Okay, great.
No vote necessary.
Terrific. Uh, moving on to 9B. 1633 26th Street, 19 ENT 0294, 19 ENT 0295, and 19 ENT 0296. Uh, we, uh, will have callers in the queue for, uh, public comment. Let us start first with, um, ex parte, and we'll start with Commissioner Reese.
I have not spoken to anybody about this project.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Pastor?
Um, I had a call with the applicant and their team yesterday, um, including the architect, and I have had, um, multiple correspondence with the applicant, um, and members of his team, specifically TJ.
Commissioner Raskin?
And multiple, who else, with Mr. Tate and Wendy, no.
Right, um, and I am alphabetically challenged, so going back to the Rs, Mr. Rask, Commissioner Raskin.
Yeah, um, on, uh, Tuesday, June 8th, I had a Zoom meeting with the, uh, project applicant team. They gave a quick presentation and we, um, uh, talked about the project, they answered some questions. On, uh, Wednesday, June 9th, I, uh, uh, corresponded the email with, uh, Matthew Wells and Wish Redorta of the city's urban forestry team, uh, regarding, uh, potential implications for the city's urban forest, uh, and I have walked past the site on multiple occasions.
Commissioner Lambert?
Um, I have not met in person with the applicant's team, but I've had a number of emails from their representative, Paula Rarmar, and have responded back and forth with her.
Commissioner Fresco?
Um, I have not spoken to anyone on the team. Well, I did, well, I did talk to Laura, uh, Paula earlier today, but not about this project. Um, I did go and visit the site and walk around Bergama, uh, this morning at about 10:30.
Commissioner Fonda Bernardi?
Uh, no communications.
All right, uh, I will say I have, um, uh, in pre-COVID times, enjoyed, uh, food truck, uh, uh, cuisine from the vicinity of the project site. Uh, on, um, June 11th, uh, in the morning, I met with, uh, Hagi Belzberg, Jessica Hahn, uh, uh, Ms. Dabell, Dabell from Kilroy, Mr. Laffer, Mr. King, Mr. Lee, and Mr. Baker, uh, and then, um, on the 15th of July, I had a conversation with Mr. Laffer about the letter from Phil Tate regarding condition two. Um, and we do have caller, we do have callers in the queue. Um, I would like to know, before we jump in, uh, is there any interest on the part of the commission in waiving the staff report on this? Would not waive our questions, but is there, Commissioner Lambert, do you want to move that?
I would move that.
Is there a second for waiving? Great, let's, uh, moved by Lambert, seconded by Raskin, let's have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Fresco?
Yes.
Commissioner, uh, Fonda Bernardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert?
Yes.
Commissioner Pastor?
Yeah.
Commissioner Raskin?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
I'm abstaining.
And Chair Landris?
Yes, and, uh, Michael, don't go in the way, we may have questions for you. Um, we're not letting any, you know, we're not, we're not dropping anything here, we just, uh, we have a long night. Uh, and let us now hear from the applicant. Um, you have up to 15 minutes, you can reserve some of that time for rebuttal. Uh, I want to note that we have two callers who preregistered, I don't know if they're both in the queue, um, but, uh, but let's go from there.
Hi, good evening, uh, my name is Philip Tate, I'm the Senior Vice President of Development and Government Affairs at Kilroy Realty. I'm also a resident of Sunset Park. Um, our team includes CJ Laffer at Arding Larmore, Scott Baker with Realm, and Hagi Belzberg is the architect on the project, um, who will be talking tonight. Uh, you know, I, I'll try to be brief, um, you, you saw in the letter, we're 100% carbon neutral operations, number one in terms of sustainability in North America, number one in the world, uh, in terms of publicly traded real estate development companies. We're very proud of that, and, um, we put sustainability into everything we do. We're targeting LEED and Fitwell Platinum on this project. Um, you know, when MTV moved out of this site, go to Hollywood, uh, because they couldn't grow any further in the space, uh, we thought long and hard about what to do here. Um, and I really wanted us to do housing on the site because frankly, selfishly, as the guy who had to entitle it, that wouldn't have required an EIR. We would have been able to go straight into permits and, uh, go through the designer review process, but we wouldn't have had the sequoia delay that's taken us 600 days to get to where we are. Um, however, because of the costs of construction, because of the costs of replacing the existing, um, commercial parking below grade, and because of the requirements for affordable housing and the cost that that imposed on the project, we could not get that to pencil, um, especially because this site is not an ideal site for residential being surrounded on all sides by office commercial. So instead, we turned for, okay, if this is going to be an office project, how do we make it special? And so we brought in, uh, Hagi and his team, and we looked at a mass timber design. It's going to be our first entire building mass timber. Um, we've done some on a partial building build in San Diego, um, but it's a, you know, it, it's good for the environment, it creates a sense of warmth and a sense of place. Uh, we also tried to make this fit in with the community surrounding it. We're very proud of this, and so I'm going to turn it over to Hagi and Scott to tell you about what particularly we did to design to make it a great project. Hagi?
Thank you, um, uh, hopefully you can see my screen. Can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Great, um, thank you very much, and thank you commissioners for allowing us to speak this evening. My name is Hagi Belzberg, Belzberg Architects. Uh, we are located in Santa Monica, and tonight, speaking about, uh, the 26th Street project with Kilroy and Realm Landscape Architects. Um, most importantly, wanted to point out is, you know, this is, this is, as, as discussed, a, um, a collaboration with a development company who is very interested in the same, uh, sustainable, uh, uh, issues that we are, and we have really jumped into this project in, in addressing those. Uh, the project itself, in pre-COVID imagery, you could see here, one of the most amazing things about this corner is how it had just organically grown into a food truck mecca for Santa Monica, and it really had, um, us wanting to not just turn our backs on it, but really embrace what's happening here. From all the different offices and all the different, the schools and institutions and locations that come here, we really feast and join in, you know, the serendipitous encounters really do take part, and we wanted to embrace that on this corner. Another feature are the, um, the materiality that exists here, really is a hearkening back to the quarry that existed a long time ago, the brick quarry, uh, in the parking lot, where we are looking to make our new development. You know, most buildings, they, uh, most developers, they ask us to do one very, very large building to be efficient and so on, but here, Kilroy really pushed us to open it up and create more of a wellness approach, where we have a courtyard, instead of four facades, we now have 12 facades. These 12 facades allow light, air, deep, deep inside the building, so everyone really benefits from the natural, um, um, opportunities, but reducing the need for artificial light and, and artificial mechanical use. What we're also looking to do is, we unilaterally pushed in, you can see in Building B, pushed in from the property line to, to further create an area to support the, the food trucks. So there is a, a better, you don't have to just sit on the curb, quite frankly. Now there's a place that you can really sit and, and, um, inter, uh, interweave with the, with the landscape and so on, and, and, you know, basically a better design to, to really facilitate what is existing there right now. The materials, as I spoke of earlier, where exterior are the brick and some, and, and a little bit of metal, but we are bringing forward the CLT construction, um, not only on the interior, but it will be displayed on the exterior as well. You can see here, not only are we bringing out, uh, taking the existing building and opening it up so you can see right through into the courtyard, but we are also introducing, um, more mature, uh, more, uh, uh, street trees and canopies, and creating a layering that really, really would work, uh, well on 26th Street as well as Pennsylvania. Again, speaking to this courtyard, uh, approach, uh, we're not just allow, we're not just coming off of the corner, but opening up onto Pennsylvania, so we do have a public plaza, and the first element that you do see is an exterior circulation, vertical circulation, that really just brings you in and allows you and invites you to, um, walk up, and exterior hallway circulations that, uh, focus outwards. The elevators are actually tucked in behind on purpose to really downplay the use of those, and, and of course, the large, uh, uh, tree in the center. Now, um, what also we see is that there is a tremendous contribution back to this public greenbelt, public garden, public plaza opportunity. You can see through the photographs, down here are all those food trucks, so we are literally right opposite, eroding the property line so that there's more area for, like I mentioned, this communal, this area communal serendipitous encounter, serendipitous opportunities for people to come and mingle. Um, a little bit of a more rendering, we're also looking to introduce some street furniture so you can sit and pause, not just stand and, but also maybe lay under one of these trees. And also, the entry into our courtyard is, is not through a, an interior lobby, but it's actually an exterior threshold, chorus, that allows people to see all the way in and through. You know, looking at the corner, uh, rendering right now, you can see that we're looking to introduce a lot more greenery, introduce a lot more canopy, and, and when you walk towards the plaza area, we are opening it up so you can see into the courtyard, but mostly you can also see into the buildings. We've offset the grids for the CLT columns so that they do become a branded item from the street, so it's not only a, a, a wonderful, sustainable material to use for construction that allows for a faster rate of construction, but also allows for less materials to be used because you don't have to cover it up. Uh, we know, we're building, uh, right now on 2740 Main Street, we practice what we preach, we've been building and we're, uh, a month away from completing our own CLT building for our own offices, and we have tested just exposing everything, so you do get a warmer materiality, you do get a greater acoustical, uh, condition, you do get this, uh, less materials, painting, sanding, and everything just is, is, well, frankly, a better, a better... Is, is, well frankly, a better, a better approach to sustainable construction. Another element that I wanted to introduce is Kilroy's commitment to other sustainable aspects like alternative area lobbies for. For alternative means of, of access, so bicycle lobby. So where we can have places where people can meet and, and not only have a moment up on top, but you know, lobbies for bicycles where almost like. Where you would go around the water cooler up in the offices, but now you have these opportunities in the lobbies for bicycles. We've made, instead of turning our backs on the vacant property behind us, thinking that no one will see. Kilroy has allowed us to spend the money to open that building up and again, have a tremendous amount of light, not only go into the offices. But really project what we're doing inside back outwards. So we really are trying to promote this type of construction warmth and materiality. And finally, before I hand it over to Scott at Realm, again, a view of the courtyard. Where we're not only showing a tree that's going to be mature in 20 years. But from day one, we're looking to spend the money to build over the underground parking lot, a place to centralize a mature specimen tree. So it really does become the hearth of this community, this building and community of patrons. Scott, would you like to add anything?
Four quick points, four key ideas for the site, one, a landscape wrapper that brings biodiversity and biophilia around the perimeter. And fits in with the landscape vernacular of the region, bringing back urban tree canopy to the site by, by growing the street trees. And anchoring the center space with a key tree. And then three, as Hagi talked about, activating the street, sidewalks are not just pass-throughs connecting A to B. With the idea of a place and creating an urban porch at the main entry. And then finally, the idea of anchoring the center space of this campus, in some ways, the identity of this campus. With a big signature specimen tree that brings shade, that brings cooling. And it becomes kind of the social anchor for the space, we're very excited about the idea of urban nature featuring so prominently within the development.
Last quick word, this is not about just being progressive, this is also looking to see historically what California courtyards. Have done so well for both residential and, and campus-like architecture. Courtyards work, they bring us together, they're healthy and we feel that this is the best strategy for this location, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, let us now go to questions and since we waved, well, let's now go to questions. We'll go to questions of staff later, so Commissioner Fonda Bernardi?
Couple of two simple questions, first of all, let me say, I really like what you've done with the streetscape. Pennsylvania Avenue has been begging for a sidewalk for years and you went way above and beyond, you did better than a sidewalk. He gave us basically a linear park and it's nice to see that it's buttressed by the food trucks, which have always been there, but now there's a nice link there. My two questions are, is the courtyard open to the public all the time or only during business hours or how does it interact with the? With the public?
It'll depend on, this is Philip Tate from Kilroy, it'll depend ultimately on leasing and who the tenant is. And how they want to utilize it and what their security concerns are. It will be situated such that it can be publicly accessed, but. It'll ultimately be up to the tenant to decide what level of public access there will be.
Okay, and then you mentioned that this would be a platinum lead rated building, is that true?
Correct, lead and fit well.
And are you, is this a net zero building?
That, I can tell you.
On site?
Yeah. Vaishali, do you know the answer, hold on. Vaishali is our director of, I believe, still on the line. Vaishali, do you know if this is a net zero building?
Yes, can you hear me guys, I'm here?
Yes.
Great.
Yes.
No, this is not, as I believe it to be a net zero building, there will be a solar array on the roof, but. I don't believe that this will be net zero, onsite net zero building.
You, do you know how close you are, what percentage of your power needs are being generated locally?
I don't currently at this time, but I could, I could definitely find out from.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Fresco?
Hi, you started your presentation explaining to us that. You wanted at first to build a housing project, but it wasn't penciling out. But my understanding is that this could be. Flexible if you so chose to maybe someday convert it to a live-work kind of a situation? And is that something you would be open to and I would ask staff too, but is there a way you could maybe? Would you be interested in or could it be retrofitted in or stubbed, not retrofitted, but stubbed so that in the future? If the market changed and you wanted people to be able to live-work there, could that be set up?
You know, I guess the short answer is anything is possible with enough money, but. I don't know that we'd be willing to commit to stubbing in for future residential today. Because I mean frankly, what will end up happening is when we build a building, the tenant's going to sign a lease for 15 or 20 years. So at that point, it's probably easier to retrofit it in. If that tenant leaves and then it shifts 20 years from now to residential. Versus spending all the money, using up the physical resources. And putting all that in today for something that may never happen, it'll, you know, the beauty of the CLT design is it's pretty flexible. In the ability to retrofit later.
That is, that is correct. The flexibility is quite extraordinary where we can, so I just wanted to throw that in.
I just needed to throw that out there, it's hard to let it go. All right, thank you, that was my only question. Oh, I do have one other question for Mr. Belsberg. The glass windows facing the courtyard, is that a schematic look or is that the final look? Or is that like something you've worked through, I'm just asking because it looks a little bit on the corporate. I mean, the outside besides are awesome and then the inside looks a little more generic and corporate, so I was wondering how far along you were.
I think it's a great, I think it's a great question and perhaps the idea of why it may tend to look corporate is because we've tried to maximize. The amount of light towards the courtyard. Though really that was the strategy, it's more of a strategy than it is a looking for an aesthetic. Function first, wellness first. So we want it to maximize the amount of light, natural light that you get inside, really that was the idea. And from the other direction, when you're down below, looking up in the perspective, seeing all that wood. And not being covered by drywall or acoustical, you know, T-bar ceiling and stuff and fluorescent, that is also what we are interested in doing is having a full reading.
Okay, well, I'm counting on you to cover up that other building next door to you to the north, it's your much prettier building. Thank you.
Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you, I just have two questions and one's curiosity. I mean, I think this is a far more reasonable commercial site than housing site, so I agree with you. But when you looked at the housing feasibility, was, were the development standards in the plan, i.e. the variable difference between tier one and tier two. Part of the reason it was unworkable? Did you get that far?
You know, I think the two biggest problems we faced were the fact that you needed to replace all of the existing parking underground, plus the parking for the new residential. And this site, it's very expensive to go below grade, there's, I believe, a water table issue and I believe also some environmental issues that we're having to contend with. And then when that's compounded with a 20% affordability requirement. You know, it just was getting tight, if the zoning limitations in terms of height. And FAR put kind of an absolute cap on how much density you can put in. And we just couldn't get enough units on to, to make up for those two big hits.
Thank you, no, I mean, I think we all perceive a problem with the standards in the plan. And bringing up parking, I mean, I'm, this is the second project that we've seen that has. In your case, 399 parking spaces and being one half, one eighth of a mile from an expo station, which is just shocking. Is that the minimum required by the city, 399 spaces?
I think we're a little bit above the minimum, we're replacing the existing and then I think we're minimum for the new. And the existing is above the minimum. And you know, honestly, while we were still kind of contemplating what to do, we got approached by the city on multiple occasions, asking us to build up. Build out the full complement of parking with the idea that it would be available as park and ride. Uaters, because this, there's that requirement that you share everything over two per thousand. And you know, frankly, the reason is the leasing market, there's certain tenants in the market that won't consider a building unless the. The ratio is at a certain point. We also have a number of tenants, you know, we have a thing in Seattle where the tenant took it and they converted the parking to. Storage and data rooms because they're running shuttles for their employees and encouraging them to use mass transit. So our guess, we don't know until it's leased, but our guess is this becomes like a. Mini campus for a tech or entertainment company and those are exactly the kinds of folks who may be coming to us and asking us to convert. Parking to storage.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up, excuse me, because I was going to say, if we don't need all this parking, which hopefully will be the case. Is there an adaptive reuse that's actually out there and being used that you might pursue?
Yeah, yeah, folks get creative.
Well, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Pastor?
Commissioner Lambert asked all my questions about parking. Mr. Tate, if the city, if you did lease. Right, and you found out you didn't need many parking spaces and you didn't need them for lease, would you be open to using them for park and ride with the city?
It would depend on what the, well, everything over two per thousand, we are obligated to put into. I believe so, I believe that's how the Bergamot Plan works. And you know, beyond that, it would have to involve a discussion with the tenant. Some tenants would be happy to do that, some would have security concerns.
Yeah, I guess I'm, well, nevermind, it's not worth it, thank you, that's all I have, I think, I think this project's great.
Thank you.
Commissioner Raskin?
My questions have been asked and answered, thank you.
Commissioner Reese?
I like, I love the project, I mean, I like the project, it's very well designed, I like the green scapes around the corners of it and I, so I appreciate the design, I have. Very little to comment, questions, but I do want to push on the parking. As I read it, I think you're about 39 or the top. And my sense is looking at your parking plan, you probably, like, if, if you were not to build a 39. You really don't save anything in terms of grading, you still have that full, you have to go a third level. I guess a question to the architect, if you didn't have those 39 spaces that are over the top of what code is. Would you get a smaller third level? And would that save you money and is that of interest to you?
I, I don't have the ability to answer that actually, I would, that would be a, with, with very, with a very, a lot of respect, I, I don't, I'm not. I don't have that ability to answer that, I'm sorry. That would take quite a bit of study because if I gave you the wrong answer, that would be quite a costly mistake. So I, I can't answer if, without doing some, without doing any study.
And I apologize to your team that I couldn't review these questions with you before, my world just got away from me in the last couple of weeks. Okay, then if I'm, okay, then I'm going to move on to my next, my last question here, which is if I'm understanding this correctly, you guys did an EIR. Free every impact area you could mitigate, so there's no statement of overriding consideration. Why didn't we go down the EIR path?
That's a good question. You know, I think.
Go on, I'm sorry.
Well, I think, you know, when we started the project, we're right next door to the Penn factory site, it's been a hot area. It's an office project, there is a thought pre-doing the study and analysis that we could. It was right around the time we were shifting from level of service to VMT and so it wasn't 100% clear. I think when we first started talking to the city about this project, we were still on level of service and, you know, it would have had a level of service impact. We also generally as a company prefer to take the more conservative approach, we'd rather just. Suck it up and do the EIR upfront than get stuck in litigation later. In retrospect, you know, this project's been well received, we haven't heard, you know, there were no comments on the EIR itself. So maybe it was overkill.
Okay, thank you, appreciate the opportunity to ask questions, I have no more.
All right, okay, so I would like to ask just a few questions following up on our conversations. So just to clarify for everyone watching, the parking that we're talking about is the underground parking, your project will not leave any. The surface parking lot next to this project is not your property, is that correct?
Correct, we do not own that property.
You will not have any more surface parking, so if, maybe if, if the parking requirements change in the future. We can encourage the owners of the parking lot next door to provide some housing. All right, so let's talk about the, the inner courtyard, we had a conversation about, you know. What might be possible if your tenants permit it? In terms of making that space potentially something that could be offered to community groups or, you know, used in the evening. It's such a beautiful courtyard, have you given any more consideration to how you might be able to make that an event space, whether for your own uses or for the public? Or for community groups?
I'll, I'll follow up.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I, I think generally speaking, we are very much in favor of activating spaces and making them pedestrian-friendly, community-friendly. Inclusive spaces. Ultimately, it comes down to the, in a space like that, in the leasing context, the tenant would have a lot of say. And so, you know, we've got some ideas for things you can do. But you know, without knowing who the tenant is going to be and what their particular concerns are, it's tough to tell you exactly what it's going to be. And also in, in particular, you know, the frontage along Pennsylvania without knowing who's going to be in that space. Because that could really be a key swing space in terms of how you activate. So the key is to get some, something good and active into that particular space.
And I want to follow up, right after you made that comment, quickly took just a piece of trace and looked at it. You know, what's flexible to a single tenant or a multi-tenant is flexible for what you had proposed as, you know. Some sort of collaborative opportunity, every so often something happens, music in the park kind of thing. With very, very little effort, we, you were right, we can add a few little stub outs, let's call it, there's electrical. And there's water and, and those are very, very, so we were, we have those means and it would benefit both. Both an event and the tenant as well. So it was a very, very good comment and my answer to you is it's very easily done with the existing design that we have. So I appreciate the comment.
You know, I hope you'll, I hope you'll, I hope you'll consider building out the possibility so that, you know, should a tenant want to be able to do. so that, you know, should a tenant want to be able to do that, I'm, you know, I'm envisioning people, you know, you have people who work there, standing on balconies, looking at, you know, watching concerts under the tree, or, you know, if they want to make, if they want to sponsor something with a local nonprofit, you know, having the electrical stub outs and the water and the drains, and the bathrooms that don't require access to the building, you know, those are, those are pretty, those are pretty important to have in the core design from the get-go. My second question has to do with, we had also talked about the possibility, and I just want to confirm this, we may, you know, want to note this, is the massing of the building that fronts on 26th Street, there is that rather large blank wall that is a structural wall, so we can't put any windows in it, but we talked about thinking about some kind of a sculpture, 3D art that could go on, on that large wall, and you're, you're still open to putting some public art up there?
Absolutely.
Perhaps to soften that facade?
Absolutely. I mean, we've, we've studied it ourselves for many months ahead of, ahead of time. Right now, obviously, the, it's a blank slate, so that gives us the most, the most flexibility. So yeah, absolutely.
Are you going back to ARB from here, or are you done with ARB?
We are going to ARB. We did a, we did a prelim presentation to ARB, and then we're going to give our final to them as well. We've, their comments as well, and we've appropriated them.
Terrific. So we may, we may invite that sort of review by ARB. And as I said to you in our meeting, I think it's so exciting that you're using mass timber, we talked about this in the housing element, you know, the, the nature of the construction, the fact that it's going to, going to go fast, it's going to be effective, it's going to be inexpensive, it's going to be environmentally sustainable. I also think that that kind of, you know, you could have a mass timber artwork that really celebrates the kind of materials that you're using, so I hope you'll be open to that.
For sure.
And then, Bert, thank you. And then for Mr. Laffer, I am looking at, I'm looking, I was looking at the revised SOA, and I am not seeing a change to Condition 2, with the slightly, you know, more ordinance-consistent but expansive description of types of uses that might be permitted on the ground floor. Do you want to, do you want to say a word about that? Maybe update us on your conversations with staff?
Sure. My communications with staff were that they were, they were supportive of the requested modification. I'm not sure if a revised SOA was circulated, or if staff was going to present a PowerPoint just with, with the modifications that, that they had agreed to.
Okay, let me ask staff, Michael, would that be something you could show us while we are in questions with the applicant, before we open the public hearing?
Yes, it is. I can go ahead, I can share my screen. My PowerPoint that I was going to present, was going to highlight the revised conditions that we are, that staff is agreeable to, from the applicant. Let me see if I can go ahead and share my screen here really quick with you guys, and I'll show you that. Okay. So, let me know if you can't see my screen or not, but.
There it is.
Okay, okay. So as part of the amended conditions, Condition Number 2, yeah, we have agreed to amend it to, he is following, which is in the slide, that the use of the ground floors and its base in Building B along Pennsylvania Avenue shall comply with, with, with the requirements for active ground floor uses set forth in Table 5.04 of the Bergamot Area Plan, under which active ground floor use is defined to include retail, restaurant services, residential, lobby entries, offices, workshops, and web working community gathering spaces. And the reason why we've agreed to this is we do agree that it does provide a little bit more flexibility for the applicant for future, for future leasing of that actual space along the Pennsylvania Avenue frontage.
And then I note, we also dealt with Pages 52 and 32.
Yeah, sorry, yeah, and we also deleted Condition Number 57, that was a duplicate, and we deleted Condition Number 32 because demolition is not going to be part of this project.
Great, thank you. So it sounds like, it sounds like we're all, you and staff are aligned now on the, on the SOA.
Yes.
Yes, we, yes, yes. I spoke with CJ this afternoon, and he agreed that the SOA with those revised conditions are acceptable.
Terrific. Okay. Those are, those are all of my questions. Thank you. Let's go to the public comment. I believe we have two callers, and then we'll come back for rebuttal. And just a reminder-
One more caller?
Yep. Turn off for Scott and CJ, and Phil, to turn off your screens while we're in public comment. And Haggy, Haggy? Do we have them? Melissa?
Yes, we have one caller so far, and I just sent a follow-up to the second caller. So our first caller, who is in the queue for this item, is Eddie Rivera. Eddie, you are now off mute, you are live in the meeting, and you have three minutes for comments. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I do appreciate the opportunity to speak before you. I'd just like to say that I'm here as a construction worker and a union member of the Labor's International Union of North America, and we are in full support of this project. It, it's, I think it's going to provide a very strong economic benefit to the community, to the city. It's, it's a responsible developer who will be using responsible and safe contractors, and it's going to provide the opportunity for many construction workers to work, hopefully close to home, minimizing the commute and traffic. So it also allows for more time within the community and their family especially, very much needed family time. All these things are things that I look for, forward to, anytime I have the opportunity to work close to home. As a construction worker, those opportunities are few and far between, and we do appreciate them whenever they do come about. So I'm urging you to please support the project, let's keep it moving forward, and I do look forward to the opportunity for many construction workers to possibly start working on that sometime in the near future. Once again, thank you for the opportunity and consideration. You guys have a great evening.
Do we have our second, do we have our second caller?
No, they're not in the queue.
Okay. Have we tried, have we, we've, how many notices have we given them?
The initial notice at the beginning of the meeting, and one did just go out about a minute ago. Or, well, the item was in progress, to call in now.
Yeah, yeah, and we are actually a little bit later than we thought we'd be because we moved an item. So let us know if they show up as we did last time, but I think we should go into rebuttal and, and then discussion, so. Any rebuttal, or does the applicant waive rebuttal?
Fully agree with his comments, it's a great project.
All right, any more questions for staff, before I close the public hearing? Anybody? Nope? All right, thank you.
I have a question.
Yeah.
This is for staff, right?
Yeah, I think we're closing the public hearing at this point, with the applicant. Yeah.
I can ask a question.
Yes.
Okay. My question is, if at some time, hopefully in the near future, we amend the Bergamot Area Plan, and if AB 1401 passes, that we're going to have to anyway, to remove minimum parking requirements, that won't apply to this project, I assume. But as part of the amendment, if there was something that, some language to the effect that if a parking study showed that all the parking spaces in a project were not needed, and it was conclusive, then those parking spaces could be converted to park and ride or some other public use. Would that, could that happen? I'm asking staff. But with the future amendment of the plan, would it apply to this project?
You mean, you'd want to add a condition that, that it could accommodate some future amendment, that, like, if we amended the plan to reduce parking requirements? Would they be able to-
No, 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 it's not, no, it's not that. It's basically, I understand the parking requirements for the parking requirements. I'm saying is if at some point in the future, they could show through a parking study that all those spaces are not needed, then we would allow park and ride or some other public use of those spaces for the project?
Well, given that, yeah, it's not, because it is, the, the project is being entitled under the code that exists today, right? So if there are minimum parking requirements, they are required to provide that. We really, you know, what you're suggesting would amount to something of a variance, you know, a reduction in parking essentially in the future. I don't think that that would be allowed, given that, you know, I think the applicant is proposing to, proposing a code compliant project.
I get it, I get it. So a future amendment of the plan to allow conversion of these spaces would not apply to this project?
No, I mean, unless, it just depends the nature of that amendment, if there was a reach back or what have you.
That's something to think about.
But could they, could the amendment to the plan specify, well, yes, it could have a reach back, or they could essentially come back if they wanted to convert, right?
Right.
That's correct, yeah.
That's, that's important to know.
Okay, any other questions? I don't see any way, I don't see any, let's jump into discussion, or does someone, if anybody, if someone's ready to make a motion, I can give you the cheat sheet.
Chair, if I may, we do have our second speaker is with us now.
All right, let's, can we have a quick motion to reopen the public hearing?
They're moved.
They're second?
Okay.
Great, let's have a roll call.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes. Commissioner, oh, Commissioner Fresco?
Yes.
Commissioner Fonda Bernardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert?
Yes.
Commissioner Pastor?
Yeah.
Commissioner Raskin?
Yes.
And Chair Landrus.
Yes. So we'll reopen the public comment, and I, if anyone is listening, if you are here for future public comment, please, please, please make yourself known. The moderator, we really don't want to get into the habit of reopening public comments because we haven't been able to track you down, and it's ultimately your responsibility to be available, and we need to hit the public comment moment. So please, please, if you're listening, and you are here for the next item, please get in the queue now, and, and we'll go from there. Mr. Adio, you have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Jose Radillo. I am a union member of La Union Local 300. As such, I am here in support of the project. Passing the project will help contribute to the growth of local economy, as well as provide much-needed working jobs for skilled laborers. Projects such as this, which support union jobs, are also supporting healthy family lifestyles and positive future. I am proud of you to support our future and hope to support this project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Does the applicant waive rebuttal on that comment?
Yes.
Yes, great, thank you. All right, are we ready for, are we ready to move forward with a motion or discussion? Commissioner Lambert?
We have to do these separately, right?
Okay, so what we first need to do, we need to do the EIR first, then we can do the, then we can do the three permits, and then we do the SOA.
Okay. Okay, so I would move that we recommend adoption of the EIR. I don't have the actual citation in front of me before the-
You're moving Resolution 21004.
Okay, that's what I'm doing. Okay, so I move that.
Is there a second?
Second.
Great, moved by Lambert, seconded by Fonda Bernardi. Can we have a roll call?
Commissioner Fresco?
Yes.
Commissioner Fonda Bernardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert?
Yes.
Commissioner Pastor?
Sorry, I need clarification. Are we recommending approval?
Yeah, we're approving it. We're approving.
Are we approving the EIR?
Yeah.
This is for the EIR, right?
Right, so we are approving the EIR, not recommending.
You are approving.
Approving the EIR.
Right.
And so I vote yes to approve the EIR.
Commissioner Raskin?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
And Chair Landrus.
Yes, so that passes seven to nothing. Is there a motion to approve 19 ENT 0294, 19, which is the DRP, the 19 ENT 0295, which is the CUP, the conditional use permit, and 19 ENT 0296, which is the vesting tentative tract map?
They're moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Great, moved by Fonda Bernardi, seconded by Lambert. Do we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Fresco?
Oh, sorry, hang on. Commissioner Raskin wants to say something before we vote.
All right, just to confirm, this is with the understanding that it's with modified conditions, as we discussed?
Yeah, we're doing the SOA next, so when we do the SOA, it will be moved with the revised conditions. Thanks.
Got it, okay.
Yes.
Wow.
Jing, do we still, did we lose you? All right, I'll call it. Commissioner Fonda Bernardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Fresco?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert?
Yes.
Commissioner Pastor?
Yeah.
Commissioner Raskin?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes, I hope you're recording me, writing these down.
We are recording, yes. I'm a yes, so those pass unanimously. No, the recording is still moving, moving forward, and our final motion is for the statement of official action as revised and reviewed by staff. Is there a motion to approve that SOA?
I saw move. Second.
Great, moved by Commissioner Lambert, seconded by Commissioner Fresco, yes? Great. Do we have Jing back to call the roll?
Yeah, sorry, my Bluetooth disconnected, unfortunately. Can you hear me?
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. Commissioner Fresco?
Yes.
Commissioner Fonda Bernardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert?
Yes.
Commissioner Pastor?
Yeah.
Commissioner Raskin?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
And Chair Landrus.
Yes, so that passes seven zero, the SOA as revised and discussed on the day. So, all right. I just want to say, I believe this is one of the very first mass timber projects in the city. This is really exciting. I hope that, I didn't get a chance to ask this, and I didn't because we were rushing, no, we weren't rushing, we were taking our time, but we were, we were being efficient with our questions. I hope that whatever may have been learned from the process and will be learned, whether by planning staff or buildings and safety staff, about the application and implementation of mass timber in our city, I hope that those learnings will be absorbed and inform the work that we're trying to do to promote innovation in housing construction through our housing elements. So I appreciate, I want, just want to say that I appreciate the opportunity to get to learn a little bit more about it through this project. So with that, let us now move on. Not bad people, two projects in, in, in less than 90 minutes. Let us move on now to 9C, 710 Broadway, 20 ENT 0241, 20 ENT 0244, 20 ENT 0268, 20 ENT 0242, 20 ENT 0243, 21 ENT 0081, and I believe before we begin, Commissioner Raskin would like to make a statement.
Yes, thank you, Chair Landrus. I am going to be recusing myself from this item, and let me just give a quick explanation. I'm an associate at the law firm Hanson Bridget LLP, which represents Albertson's, the parent company of bonds, in matters that are completely unrelated to this hearing, in, these are non-land use matters. I have not worked on these matters, I am not an equity partner of the firm. Nevertheless, out of an abundance of caution and to avoid any appearance of impropriety, I am recusing myself from this matter.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Raskin, and I just want to note for the record that there are neither written communications for Item 11, nor callers for general public input on Item 12. So with that, we will bear you, we will bid you goodbye and see you in July. Happy Fourth. All right, let us start with ex parte reports, and we will start now with Commissioner Fonda Bernardi.
No report.
Okay, Commissioner Fresco?
Yeah, I have some reports. I assumed with the whole team, a whole bunch of people on June 11, where I was shown the project, that was so soon after our packet came, so I mostly listened and hadn't really developed many questions yet. I visited- Um, I visited the site yesterday at three thirty specifically to see it, even though I go by it at least seven times a day for the last twenty years. Um, and I also talked on the phone with Paula Larmour about the project for about an hour because I didn't have any questions back when we zoomed, and I did have questions, which, uh, she was able to answer, but I'll ask them again when our turn comes for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Lambert?
Um, I've had two presentations by the development team of the project, um, and I have written down the dates, but I can't find it, so I will look for them and, you know, make, put them on the record when the time is right. Um, I also got advance notice that abundant housing Los Angeles is going to submit a support letter for the project. And I know the site very well, I use seven suit all the time on the weather set and I'll feed.
Commissioner Pastor?
I had a Zoom meeting with the applicant and the representatives, including the architects and attorneys, on Monday, June seventh. Um, I also talked to Ms. Larmour today on the phone about revisions to the conditions, and I've driven by the site many, many times, and I've received, you know, multiple emails.
Commissioner Reese?
Um, I did not have a formal presentation from the applicant's team at all, um, talking, I have no, no report on that, I did ride by the site today, and I will say, I always thought the traffic on Lincoln was because of Bay Cities, but apparently it's Nina driving down Lincoln seven hundred.
I didn't go on Lincoln.
All right, um, I will start by saying that I have biked past the site many, many times, let me tell you, I have feelings about biking eastbound on Broadway at Lincoln. Um, so many feelings. Um, all right, so, uh, going back to April, um, I guess when you're the chair of the commission, you get on the applicant's speed dial. April twenty sixth, uh, I had a conversation with, um, Ms. Larmour, uh, regarding scheduling this hearing, uh, uh, again on April thirtieth, another conversation with her regarding scheduling this hearing, uh, had another conversation with her on June third regarding logistics and scheduling for the hearing, finally got to hear about the project on June eleventh around noon, from Mr. Witty, Mr. Wilts, uh, Phoebe, whose name, last name escapes me, Ms. Canari, Mr. Moritz and Mr. Garofalo, uh, I had another conversation with Ms. Larmour on June fourteenth regarding bike parking and affordable housing, uh, and I had a conversation, let's see, yesterday, uh, I was given advance notice, uh, by, uh, Leonor Camner, noting, uh, abundant housing support for, um, seven ten Broadway project, uh, Ms. Larmour, uh, reached out again regarding conditions, and, uh, this morning, uh, we had some exchanges and correspondence, uh, on which staff was CC'd regarding, uh, draft conditions, uh, so with that.
Sorry, you were going to say that I also had a conversation with scheduling.
With Ms. Larmour?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Uh, okay, with that, um, let us now move to, uh, let me just pull this up, um, there we go, uh, let us now move to staff presentation unless anybody wants to waive it. There's no mo, motion to waive it, let's, let's hear the staff presentation on this project.
Hey, good evening commissioners, this is Scott Albright, I'm the senior planner in the city planning division, and I'll share my screen and the presentation. And hopefully you can see the presentation starting?
Yes.
Okay, perfect, okay, thank you. Uh, again, my name is Scott Albright, and I'm a city, uh, senior planner in the city planning division, uh, I'm very, very pleased to present, uh, the, the project for seven ten Broadway this evening. Um, I know in the interest of time, uh, there's been, uh, many people have seen this project and have heard about this project, and, uh, I'm, there's many, many benefits to this, uh, for the community. This is basically involving the redevelopment of a suburban-style, uh, supermarket site here and located in downtown on the corner of Lincoln and Broadway. Um, this is, this project that's proposed is a, a multi-story mixed-use project, uh, within the tier three and tier two unit, um, uh, levels, uh, there's going to be proposal for two hundred and eighty residential units, uh, as well as ninety-nine thousand square feet of commercial space. Um, this project will, uh, remove again this, this gap in the downtown, uh, in terms of what is, uh, in terms of land use intensity as well as the street wall. Uh, this will expand the market rate and affordable housing supply within the city, uh, specifically the downtown, and it will retain a critical commercial service that provides, um, much-needed service to the, uh, existing residential as well as any future residential that's going to be, uh, uh, coming to downtown. Um, the project is, uh, a reflection of the LT zone as well as the TA zone as noted in the downtown community plan, half of the site, which is, uh, more adjacent towards Lincoln Boulevard, uh, is taken up by that large, uh, surface parking lot that services the supermarket, and the supermarket itself is in a different zone, uh, within the transit adjacent zone, so there are two different development standards that will be applied to this project as, uh, in its entirety. Uh, in the upper left-hand corner, you can see the, um, there's an existing, uh, service alley, the Seventh Court Service Alley that currently bisects this, uh, site. This will be, a portion of this alley will be vacated, uh, and then there will be a re-alignment that connects the alley to Seventh Street, so that's part of your tentative map that's on, also as part of your, one of the entitlements this evening. In terms of, um, the really exciting component of this project, and I think this is what has most people, uh, very, very, uh, positive about this, is the addition of two hundred and eighty residential units to the housing supply, uh, and eighty-four of those will be, um, designated for affordable units. You can see on your screen there, the, uh, the statistics of all the market rate units as well as the affordable units, uh, the affordability level of those eighty-four units will, um, provide a, a range to the thirty percent, so we have the very low income, the low, as well as the moderate income, so a range of affordable options will be available, and then we do have the hundred and ninety-six market rate units there. Uh, in terms of the commercial component, um, this is a project, uh, or this is a, the, since this is a project that is involved, uh, where the bonds company is, uh, a player in this, uh, the retention of the market was critical to their, their scope of work, so this project will retain a Vons supermarket and it will, uh, be a, a more advanced urban model as opposed to what is, what is currently on-site, which is that typical, or the more traditional suburban model. Uh, this will introduce about a sixty-three thousand five hundred square foot supermarket to the site, uh, part of that will be, uh, some liquor sales, which we'll talk about, uh, a little bit later on. Uh, another component of the project is a fitness center that's, uh, along the Seventh Street, uh, facade of the, uh, the project, and just to add a little bit of variety along the Lincoln Boulevard, there's about a fifteen hundred square foot, uh, separate outlier, uh, retail component there, just, uh, but again, the Vons market is dominating this, uh, floor plan. Uh, associated with the market itself are, uh, a couple of conditional use permits, uh, the market itself, because of its size of, uh, in excess of fifteen thousand square feet, requires a conditional use permit, um, also because there are proposals for some alcohol sales, uh, for off-site consumption as well as some tastings, there's a type twenty-one and eighty-six conditional use permit that are associated with the market as well. Uh, your staff report talks about a ground floor height modification that, uh, is necessitated by the market itself, uh, the code, uh, the downtown community plan requires, or establishes a maximum height of, uh, sixteen feet, and they are requesting eighteen feet, and our staff report, uh, provides some justification in support of their request for the modification. Uh, the third conditional use permit that's associated with the entire project is for the ground floor fitness center along Seventh Street, uh, the code currently has a limitation of that a conditional use permit is required when a fitness center exceeds one hundred linear feet of grounds, ground floor street frontage, you can just see where, uh, uh, each of these conditionally, conditional use permits are relative. Um, one of the other entitlements that's associated with this is a vesting tentative uh, tract map, uh, and the, this particular map is a little bit unusual, it's a sixty-one airspace unit subdivision that does not necessarily line up, uh, with the number of units, it's more about the project components, so that was described in your staff report, and one of the more unusual facets of this is the, uh, this map also involves the, uh, vacation of a portion of that Seventh Court, uh, Service Alley, and then it will be realigned onto the site and rededicated to the city as a service alley, so the red line kind of, uh, the red arrow shot kind of shows how the, uh, the alley will function if the street were vacate, or the alley were vacated, and the dashed line indicates the current location of, uh, the service alley. Um, just to summarize, there are six entitlements that are associated with this, and we have a development review permit, which talks about the general massing of the project, and how it works in terms of its onsite amenities, its community benefits, as well, does this project fit within its overall context of the adjacent streets. We have the, uh, vesting tentative tract map, which again is the sixty-one units as well as the partial vacation of the Seventh Court, uh, we have a conditional use permit for the, uh, the market that exceeds fifteen thousand square feet, the minor modification for the ground floor height, we have a conditional use permit for the alcohol sales, again, it's a type twenty-one and eighty-six, as well as the conditional use permit for, uh, the fitness center. Uh, your staff report has, uh, presented findings in the draft statement of official action, uh, in support of all of these, um, requested, uh, entitlements. We are very, very excited and pleased, this project is a, a really good representative of the downtown community plan and all of its principles in terms of urban design and urban continuity, so our, our staff recommendation is to approve this, all of the entitlements, and, uh, and, uh, one of the things we've been, um, there's been some, uh, a little bit of, uh, the project applicant has offered a little bit of, uh, some additional items to include in the project description, uh, and this would be regarding, there were some concerns raised by some commissioners concerning just the cross-traffic on Lincoln Boulevard and exiting the site onto that street, uh, so there is an inclusion, uh, within the project description to have a, a sign posted, uh, indicating to watch for the cross-traffic, um, and also, as the commission has done in the past, but, uh, in terms of, of affordable housing providers and support services for the affordable housing, so there's been an addition, uh, to the project description with that regard, so this, uh, this image that you see right now shows a revised project description based on, uh, these additional things that the developer has agreed to, so they would be included in the project description. Uh, in addition, there has, I think, um, you've all received a draft, uh, a revised draft statement of official action, um, that was later this morning, there has been additional, um, there has been additional modifications to that made, um, we've since revised condition number one, and that is to provide a little bit more direction to the architectural review board in their review, uh, they would be looking more closely at the location of the operable windows, uh, and making sure that they're available in every, uh, the living room as well as every bedroom. Uh, there would be a request for the, the ARB to pay particular design attention to the Seventh Court gate, uh, the, the design of that, so it could make sure it reduces, uh, the, the ability to have, to avoid fugitive noise from escaping the site, and then, uh, for the, um, for the ARB to pay particular attention to the design of the, the glass bridges that are, uh, uh, located along, uh, Lincoln Boulevard as well as Seventh Street, uh, making sure there's a opportunity for, uh, non-reflective glass as well as possibly an, an opportunity for, um, air to be able to, um, maybe those windows could be operable, uh, to introduce airflow into those double-loaded corridors. Um, with that, I think that's, yep, so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have, and I, if, uh, I can leave that one, uh, side up if it helps to ease in terms of the discussion, in terms of each of this, the six different entitlements. Vote.
All right, can someone direct me to the revised DOA, is it in our, is it attached to the agenda?
I think it isn't, it isn't attached.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, it is, thank you.
Would you like me to stop, stop sharing my screen, so you can?
Uh, what, is the applicant going to present next?
Yeah, let's have, are there questions for, well, I think we're going to have questions of staff first, unless folks want to wait on questions for staff until after the applicant has presented. Does anybody have questions for staff right now? Why don't we wait? Well, if it's only Leslie, are you willing to wait, or do?
I, I, it's a quick que, it's just a really quick question, um, I was gonna, I was trying to language about bringing in a nonprofit provider of wraparound services, et cetera. CCSM is part of this development team, and they're going to manage and operate the affordable units, so I'm assuming you're not saying an, an additional nonprofit provider has to come in? I don't really understand the rationale for that language.
I think that, that was, yeah, I mean, I, I realize, uh, CCSM is a partner in this, uh, this was in response to just, we, I think the commission has always asked for these type of services with the mixed-use projects, and so we're just kind of following on that lead.
It was clearly CCSM is going to do all that.
Right.
It's a, it's in the project descri, I mean, I, I'll jump in because I'm the one who asked for it, uh, it's in the project description, want to make it clear that it's part of the project, and if there were ever a transfer of ownership on this property, it would remain in the project description, remain in the DRP, so we've been pretty consistent about that, and it refers to the below eighty percent rather than the, all the, all the affordable. Uh, Jim, do you want to ask your question now, since we jumped into questions?
No, I, I, I want to keep it going, and I'll just, hopefully they'll answer my question, and if not, I'll ask up there.
Great, okay, um, and, uh, uh, I just want to ask, Scott, did you get resolution on the, and this is part of the revised DOA, did you get resolution on the window film issue? I know that there is a general ban on window film, but there are those concerns about, uh, light and heat, and there are in fact window films that are fully transparent, they just, you know, cut the light and the heat.
So we do have some clarification on that, uh, we've revised that condition to indicate that, in recognition that, you know, there is going to be some times of the day where there is going to be glare, uh, that could, you know, negatively impact the food, obviously, so, uh, with the approval of the director, uh, they would be able to have certain curtains or some type of, uh, features on the window, uh, that are not permanent, and again, the thought process behind this was those permanent things that absolutely black it out, uh, and interrupt that visual connection between the interior and the exterior. Curtains and stuff like that with the, with, through the approval of the director is what we're suggesting, suggesting through the condition.
Okay, thanks. Uh, let's, let's go to the applicant then, um, and, uh, hear the presentation.
Good evening, Commissioner, can you see me?
Not yet, now we can see you.
And hear me, okay?
Yes.
And we are sharing our screen as well. Are we a go?
Uh, yeah, your screen, there you go, now you're a go.
Great, thank you, and let me reintroduce myself, since, uh, Chair Landrus, you forgot my last name.
I apologize.
That's okay, let me introduce myself since I haven't met everyone, uh, my name is Phoebe Yee, I'm senior vice president and director of design at Related California. Thank you to staff for such a detailed report, I will try and just hit some highlights as we go through this presentation next. So you guys are familiar with our team, just a quick anecdote about Vons and how we became their partner, they did a competition, we were selected, and we are excited to, uh, rebuild the store, and, uh, as you guys already noted, Queen Navy Corp is our nonprofit partner, next. A little bit about Related California, we are We are the largest private developer of mixed income residential communities in California. We have a lot of experience in public private partnerships, and we have also done a lot of projects with nonprofit organizations by Community Corp. You may be familiar with the project that we built in Santa Monica a few years ago, Ocean Avenue South or The Villages, near Tonga Park on Ocean Avenue. Next. And there, just like here, we were partners with Community Corp and we are honored to be partners with them again. Next. Right, I don't think we need to go through. We're here in downtown Santa Monica and at the busy intersection of Lincoln and Broadway. So just highlights of a few goals. It's been mentioned, we are going to expand the store and build a new and improved one, bring much needed market rate and affordable housing to this area with a range of affordability and unit sizes. And then another one of our goals is to improve the pedestrian experience along the three major streets that front our project. As Scott noted, as staff noted, we will have 280 units, 30% of that inclusive onsite affordable. We are taking the grocery store from a 40,000 square foot store to 63,000 square feet, adding an additional 34,000 square feet of retail. And also, as noted, we span two different planning zones. So for parking, we have two levels of subterranean garage, 150 for the grocery, 204 for the residential and other retail. And we have 523 parking spaces for bicycles and the availability of power for charging electric bikes. As we walk through the design, I'll show you how we are pulling our building from the property line along the three frontages to add width to the sidewalk as part of the enhancement, as well as to create additional open space at the ground floor. And we will also be capturing a large courtyard for additional open space for the use of our residents. Related is committed to sustainability. We have some of the features here listed, but I think we all know that this technology changes quickly. So as we work into the project in more detail, we will be monitoring this closely to see what else we can incorporate. We will have a range of affordability, including moderate income households. And large project, large projects such as ours generate a lot of fees, so we will be paying a little less than $10 million. So here is a rendering from that busy intersection of Lincoln and Broadway. But before we walk through the design, just let's go to the site plan for a reminder of the asphalt parking lot and the grocery store that is there now and the three curb cuts that exist. So as staff mentioned, we will be taking what is currently a more suburban shopping experience into a more urban one. We are keeping two of the three curb cuts. The one on Lincoln, we've moved further away from the intersection. The one on Seventh is approximately in the same place. And I think most importantly, we are eliminating the one on Broadway. We feel it's important to reinforce Broadway as a major pedestrian and bicycle thoroughfare. The other things that we were doing that staff noted is having different access points for pedestrians on three different sides. We have a small retail on Lincoln. The two major retail spaces will be accessed from Broadway. And the residential lobby will be accessed off the quieter street of Seventh. As for loading, I think we all know that the trucks come through the parking lot and it's on surface right now. So we're proposing to take that through the alley. And it will now be in an enclosed space. So visually it will be blocked and we will work with staff, with the ARB to make sure that we can find as much acoustical blocking as possible as well. Just to note, we've also worked with trash and fire to make sure that their maneuvering clearances are met as well. So here quickly, this is a large site. So we, for our massing strategy, we've, we're looking at three different architectural expressions organized around the large courtyard. And this is a perspective on the left of what we hope it looks like as you walk down Lincoln Boulevard, with the building being sort of a quiet, undulating facade, interspersed balconies, punched windows for the residential and large glassy expanse for the retail. And as you can see on the sidewalk, we have to work through with Public Works that we would love to have landscaping to buffer traffic along Lincoln and also to help soften the transition as the building hits the sidewalk. The rendering on the right is as we approach the corner to Broadway. That is one of the gaps that we've created between the two different building expressions, where we'd like to have seating and artwork. And we are working with DTSM to coordinate their goals for the Lincoln Boulevard improvement. Next. And here's a plan of what we're describing. You can see the width of the sidewalk varies with the landscaping. And there's the seating, little seating element. Next. So at this corner, we are collaborating with Vons to try and create some more artistic expression of signage. This is an idea of what it could be. And as we go through and see the Broadway elevation, it changes from the brick facade to a more glassy, open and inviting building with more balconies on this side. This is also the place you can see where we have the two in tier three expressed. Take that opportunity when we jump heights to have a large indentation in the building. We've been working through a lot of items with ARB. And that also marks the entrance to the Vons. Similarly to Lincoln, we are widening the Broadway sidewalk and would like to add programmatic elements such as cafe seating, a walk-up coffee window, and both of our retail entrances. And we would also love to have an architecturally intended entrance to. As we turn the corner to Seventh, we have our residential lobby. And we have another gap here that would separate the expression of the glassy building to a more solid brick building, which we'll look at next. And similarly, even though Seventh Street is smaller, the sidewalk, we would like to be able to include landscape to soften it. And then here on Seventh Street, we go back to a brick expression with punched windows for residential. I think the important things to note here is we do have the 84-foot allowable height, but we have taken the top two floors of this building and pushed it back five to eight feet from the property line because we feel like that will line up with buildings existing on Seventh and be more compatible. I think the other thing to note is even though the retailer on the ground floor, we're proposing a single use, we are trying to express that architecturally as more individual storefronts and break that up as opposed to an expanse, large expanse of glass. And then lastly, for the design, I think we all feel like quality outdoor space is as important as ever, though we are really excited to have this large 170 by 180 courtyard that will be very sunny. And we're able to have a lot of different program uses, including a lawn, a grove of trees that we plan to add geography to the courtyard so that we can get the soil depth, work from home patio, path loop, and then some private patios for the units here who are on the courtyard. And I think this is, where do we want? Sorry. So we are happy to have this project. We're proud of it and we feel like it is working within the city's downtown plan guidelines. We're open for questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Yee.
We'd like to see if there's any remaining time, if we have some left, or rebuttal.
Yes. Is there, Alyssa, how many, how much time do they have remaining?
Five and a half minutes.
Great. Okay. All right. Let us, let us, Drivik. And yes, this is just for anybody who's watching, this is not Peter Garofalo on the screen. It's Vee Vee Yee. Let us go to Commissioner Fonda Benardi.
Ah, yes. Thank you for your presentation. It was very, let me ask you a few questions, though. It looks like you have three quarters of a car per unit in this entire project. Are you comfortable with that? And why did you choose that number?
We are comfortable with that. We feel like in this urban environment, that is part of our commitment to sustainability is to promote other modes of transportation besides vehicles. That's one of the great things about this location that's very walkable and bikeable and close to public transit. We have done projects with similar parking ratios and we feel very comfortable with that.
And is any of this parking going to be used jointly with the market parking or the entirely separate?
They will be separate uses. The market will own and operate their store and their parking. So the 150 parking spaces for the grocery store will belong to Vons.
Okay. So next question is regarding, and you know where this is going. You have a very small amount of solar collector on this very large building that's going to need a whole lot of power. Why haven't we pushed that?
What is shown in the rendering, I don't think is indicative of what we will have. Our goals are to provide either 100% of the energy for the amenity spaces for the residential amenities, or we've calculated we could do approximately 25% of the total building lighting load. It's sort of an either or right now.
I see, but that's still a very small fraction of your total load. I mean, you have to have ventilation for your garage, you have elevators, you've got all these other things going on. If you're only doing a quarter of your lighting, that's really not good enough. That's just barely stretching the purpose.
Well, we, we would love to do more. We have a lot of competing items for the roof. We would also like to provide additional roof space for amenities, which I think showed up on our Axonometric. And, you know, as we work through with the mechanical and other items that we put, need to put on the roof, including mechanical items for the grocery store, we can't necessarily commit to more PV right now, but we can definitely look at it as we evaluate what the other requirements are.
Okay. So I noticed you also have one of your features is rainwater harvesting for your landscaping. And again, you have a very large site. You have, if it ever rains again, God willing, it will, you have about.
We all hope it rains.
You have a capacity for literally a million gallons if you collected all the rain that falls normally on a lot like this. How much of that water are you actually harvesting for your landscaping?
I don't have a calculation, but we have another project's done recapture and reuse of non-potable water for landscaping. And there are other things that we've done in other projects. Again, we haven't gotten to that level of detail yet, but in some other projects, we've also incorporated gray water treatment systems. That would be something we would look at here as well.
You, have you, have you designated a space somewhere to store this water while, while it's waiting to be used? Are you?
Not yet, but that would require a large tank in the garage. And it is being studied.
A lot of it, if you're only doing your landscaping, it's very sensitive to the plants you choose. And if you can only provide three quarters of a space for a car, there's potential there for more stories of water, which is going to be a number one resource everybody's going to be fighting over.
It is, for sure.
Go down that road. And that's it for my question.
I think we feel comfortable going to look for space for the water treatment in the garage. The parking number is, will stay, you know, fixed, but there are other spaces that we can look for, for storage. I do think we've implemented it in other projects, so it's something that we've prioritized. We also feel comfortable working with our landscape architect, Studio MLA, to make the right plant selections.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Fresco.
Hello, Ms. Yee. I have a question about the energy, in the energy lane also, which is just regarding Vons. I don't even know if you would necessarily know this, but with the talk of it being a new, modern style urban grocery store, does that include state of the art, modern equipment and refrigeration that will save energy? And are there any plans to do anything special in that regard?
I don't know about the special plans yet, so I can't speak to them, but they did provide us with some information and for sure that everything will be state of the art in terms of up to today's standards. Something that we can talk to is that all the refrigeration systems, I think that was something in particular you were interested in. In the new store, we'll meet the CARB's 2022 requirements to reduce emissions by up to 90%. All the lighting in the store will be LED, including the refrigerators and freezers. And the, this may not be energy, but it speaks to their dedication to sustainability as they modernize their stores, that the vast majority of their truck fleet is EPA Smart Waste certified to help reduce freight emissions.
Thank you. One question that I, sorry to say, I forgot to forward, it kept falling through the cracks. It has to do with the bike storage that's two floors underground. And is there any possibility of moving that up closer to the street so residents can zip in and out on their bikes more easily?
We have, you're talking about just the resident parking, not the sidewalk parking that we.
Right, resident. So you're in your apartment, you want to run to the store, you don't want to pedal up two ramps before you even hit the street.
We, they do have access, the bike locker room is close to the shuttle elevators. So they can actually not conflict with the cars on the ramps and go into the shuttle elevator to get their bike to the street.
So there's no, you haven't given any thought to getting any of those bikes up on the street level, like even a?
I mean, there is some along the alley already, so I'm not sure, I guess quantity wise, is there something that is more specific? I don't know how many spaces we have. Can I see?
Right. I'm talking about more, you know, longer term resident housing. You know, we have, you know, the low hanging fruit, those bike enthusiasts who, you know, I mean, I know I, if I didn't just, couldn't just roll my bike, I went to the street without much effort, I would probably ride it much less. And for, you know, old ladies like me, that's the kind of incentive we need.
All right. I mean, I, I will never say we'll not consider anything. Of course, we will consider it. I don't have a good answer for you, though, in terms of have an idea of where it could go, but definitely study it.
Yeah, I think it would make a big difference in people actually using them, and that's a lot of people in there.
And we agree, we want to encourage people to use bikes. So perhaps we could look at taking a portion of that.
Yeah, just, that would make a lot of sense.
All right. Thank you for that comment.
Thank you. I'm sorry. I saw that there was an ARB message about the loading gate and I guess maybe I'll just ask you to speak to that. And, I mean, that was something I had forwarded about, making sure that the loading area was really sound protected from not only your building, but the large building with many, many apartments next door. I think that was 100 units in that building, I can't remember.
Yeah, we appreciate that comment and agree with, we have to put language in there to address it. And.
So I did have a note relative to the design, particularly of the Broadway facade. And I had an experience, I, I didn't want to drive on Lincoln to go on my site visit. And so I went up Broadway and fell and happened to go by the new building that is recently unveiled at Fifth and Broadway, which is at least that one elevation, very, very attractive. And I really wanted, want your Broadway elevation to be as stunning. And, you know, I feel like your brick facades are really different for Santa Monica and elegant and simple and the intricacy of your Lassier facade is, I think it's more busy and less dramatic and makes less of a statement on that big an area. And would you consider a more streamlined, simplified, understated, dramatic facade instead?
Well, we totally agree with you that we want our Broadway facade to be beautiful. And I know we will have to continue to work through with ARB as we go into that phase of the project. So if there are comments that we would like to include in terms of us working with them, I think we would be open to that. I think part of our strategy in terms of creating the, or choosing different materials on the different streets is to break down the sense of the block so that it feels more like multiple buildings, as opposed to choosing the same material on each facade, which, you know, to some may feel too massive and too continuous. So that really led us to the choice of material. As far as the detailing of the balconies or the screens, you know, we are working at a schematic design level, so that is something that can definitely still continue to be developed.
Okay, fair enough. I just feel, I guess I'm just feeling like the, that the screens and just all that stuff is a little more Lego-y and less successful as the brick buildings, but I'll let it go for now. Just so you know, I know ARB made a comment about your wide-open space, but I don't agree with them, I love you all. No, that was a comment, not a question. Okay, I'm going to question. Thank you.
Thank you for your questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Lambert.
I really don't have questions because they were all answered during the multiple conversations I've had with the development team, but I do want to say I think the design is beautiful. Building has done a great job so far. So, that's all.
Commissioner Pastor.
I also don't really have any other questions, if not, I'm going to do that.
Commissioner Reese.
Yeah, a couple of questions. I think one of my main questions was answered about loading, but I'd like to see if you can bring up your loading diagram and you could just walk me through exactly how that works. I think the, yeah, so if you could do that, I'd appreciate it.
Sure. You were breaking it up a little bit, but I think you asked us to walk you through how the loading is going to work?
Yes. I'm gonna, hopefully you can hear me better now. I am getting a lot of feedback, I apologize.
Can you see our diagram? All right, so right now I think there are multiple left turns being made into the surface parking lot. And so we're proposing to bring everyone through Seventh and coming up the alley, and that's the orange arrow that is pointing up towards Lincoln Boulevard. And then sort of the dark red arrow is showing how they would maneuver into their loading dock. And that portion is all closed in, in the building.
Okay, so they drive in and then they back into the loading dock and then they enter and exit to the right out Lincoln. That's great, that's how I was hoping this was going to be designed. I couldn't tell from the plans I was looking at. But now, when trucks are coming off the freeway, are they really coming, let's say, is it south down Brock, Seventh Street to get to this, or are they coming up Seventh Street from the freeway and making a right?
I believe they can go either way, but right now I think we're anticipating that they would go down Broadway into Seventh and onto the site.
I would urge, I mean, I don't know if this is practical, but it seems like if you came across the freeway, across Lincoln and made a right on Seventh, there would be less conflict and less left for you guys, but I will just throw that out there as something to consider.
Thank you, I think we can definitely continue to study that.
Okay. Then, another question is, it seems like the ARB pushed you to build what you referred to as gaps in your building.
Yes.
Which I appreciate, I think it's nice, I really like it. But I'm questioning, why is the distance appro, what, where did you come up with the current distance? Actually, I should start with what is the current distance and width? And why is that an appropriate width?
We actually have some diagrams in our backup slides that illustrate them with a little bit more detail, so if you bear with us, we will look for them.
Absolutely.
So this is-
Hold on, I'm sorry, go on.
This is the first one on Lincoln Boulevard, so you can see dimensions there on that diagram. The 25 feet, which narrows down to 17 and opens back up. And we felt this is proportionally about the width of a unit. And we felt that facing between the two buildings needed to be, you know, big enough to be substantial, especially on Lincoln Boulevard, because the street itself is wide, just the proportions were larger that we're working with, and it is the more public-facing portion of the project. So that's sort of how we came up from just a scale and proportion point of view on this width. And then if you look at the section, let's see, actually, there's an elevation that close up to, no, that's the, this one. Maybe this is a little more clear elevation of what that gap would look like. We also felt like wider at the public facade felt more opening and inviting on the street level, as well as sort of, you know, inviting you to-
Okay.
Is that a question on this side? Do we want to go to the other side?
Yeah, if you would, I'd appreciate that. And then also in your answer, this is, ARB gave you these comments, but you have not gone back to ARB with the revisions, is that, does my understanding correct?
Correct. They gave us comments and we have been working to respond, but we have not, that was only in the float-up format.
Makes sense, thank you.
Yeah. Do you want us to go through, walk you through the Seventh Street gap as well?
I would, please.
All right, here you go. So here, we chose a narrower proportion because Seventh Street is smaller, quieter in scale and feeling, and we felt since we were on the more residential side, that having a more intimate experience here made sense. But what we did differently here, what we don't have maybe in width, I think we have in section, so if you want to go. So here, instead of there being a podium that comes all the way to grade, it's actually a series of stairs, so you won't see sort of a hard wall at the back of the gap. It'll feel more like a cut-through in section, and we felt that was a more appropriate response to this residential scaled street. And those are our aspirational images up in the upper right.
Right, okay. Great. I'm going to move on to my next question, and this is a great, that drawing was a good one you had up there. I see palm trees that you have for street trees. Can you find us another, an actual tree to plant as opposed to a really tall, nice-looking weed?
I mean, I wish I had more say in the street trees. I believe those are existing, and right now, I think the plan that we've been given is to try and keep them.
Okay, well, I would urge you to try to limit, to substitute as many trees as you can for palm trees.
Yes, I think we fully agree to look at that.
Great. Dane, on the tree subject, you touched on this, that you needed the proper depth of soil on your podium. What depths are you looking for?
Forty-eight to, you know, so four feet to four and a half feet of soil depth for larger trees.
Fantastic. One of my fellow commissioners that you mentioned about the parking ratio, you were comfortable about that. How do we feel about the bike parking ratio?
How do we feel about, well, we hope everybody has a lot of bikes. That's a lot of bike at the whole parking, so we want to see it used up, otherwise, you know, the theory in action will collect data and let you know.
Okay, because I too want everybody to ride their bikes, but I do think that's a large, a huge amount of parking that you're going to use a lot of space for. I think I'm going to stop asking questions right now. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your questions.
All right. So I have had most of my questions answered by my colleagues. I just would like to pick up this, you and I had discussed when we met, the color of the bricks on that part of the, on those parts of the buildings, and I wondered if you'd had the opportunity to see if there was a slightly lighter color available?
We have not since we met, but that is definitely something we are looking at. I don't know if you noticed, in the renderings, there was one that's a lighter color.
Yes.
More cartoonish, and then the rendering itself, which had to be done, you know, more ahead of time, was the darker one. And I think one of the comments that we're working with ARB on is to create more variety between the two bricks selected, because we had sort of gone in with more of a dark and a dark. So as part of creating more architectural expression around the site, you know, I think selecting a different color would go a long way. And I think as we indicated in that sort of close-up of the gap that we were reviewing with Commissioner Reese, that that study of a lighter brick is a direction that takes for.
That's great, okay, so I think we're going to have some more advice for ARB in this, so we'll make sure we capture that from everyone, including this issue. And then I had had an email exchange with Ms. Larmour about the direction regarding bike parking for the commercial, and I just wanted to verify, sort of verify for the record that we are all on the same page about asking the Mobility Division to pay attention to both visibility and accessibility in the security, you know, and security as we, as you design the bike parking for commercial.
Is, can you see what is on screen, whoops, you can't see it now.
Not yet, no.
Can you see it now?
Yes.
Okay, and Paula is here to address your question.
Great.
Good evening, Commissioner Paul Larmour with Harding Larmour Christian Cozel. We did send this language to city staff, it does not appear to make it on the changes sheet, so perhaps you could ask city staff if they had any concerns about this, or if it was just missed, but we are happy to include this and support this in Condition 66.
Okay, while you're here, let's check with staff.
Mr. Chairman, we do have acknowledged that that additional language would be within Condition 66. We had made a revision and then there were additional revisions, we just didn't get a chance to get it to the commission.
Of course, okay, thank you. I want to give context to that, which is that in our discussions, and I say this as the spouse of a regular bicycle shopper, so, you know, Commissioner Fresco is talking about getting the residents to use their bikes, I'm also interested in getting everybody else who lives in downtown Santa Monica to use their bikes to move around downtown. And one of the issues that we want to try to avoid, and I appreciate your being willing to work with us on this, is ensuring that when people come to the site, they can park their bikes in a manner that does not lend itself to opportunistic theft, to be very direct about it. I think, you know, as people bike to go shopping, to the extent that a bike is left quite close to the street, it leaves the opportunity for somebody to kind of come along, clip it and go very, very quickly, whereas bike parking that is on the other side of the sidewalk, that's maybe in the underhang on the way into the supermarket, is just that much less available and visible from the street, and so, and is visible to the entrance, you have a lot of people walking back and forth in front of a rack like that. So I think that, you know, on the fitness center side, it's likely that they will have their own solutions. I have yet to see a grocery store that's happy to have people walking through the grocery store with their bicycles, so maybe that's a wave of the future, if we're talking about innovative methods in a grocery store, bike-through store, but until that time, yeah, we want to make sure that there's, that people will feel safe biking to shop, leaving their bikes out front, going in and doing their shopping, and loading up their bikes and going home. So thank you for being open to that. I think unless there are other questions, I would suggest that we go to the public. Nina?
Yeah, I just have comments about all the things you said, but I'll wait, sorry. It was premature, I was just getting excited.
Okay. Do you want to ask them a different question to deal with that, or do you want to wait?
Well, I just don't agree about moving it in front of the building, that's all. But we'll discuss it later.
Well, do we want to ask them if there's anywhere else that bike parking could go for commercial users? John, let's go to the public and we can-
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, let's do that then. All right, so as a reminder, if you are here to comment on this item, please make sure the moderator knows where you are. Melissa, we have, oh, and do we have seven people?
Yes, all seven are currently in the queue.
Okay, so with seven people, we are at two minutes per person, is that, that is, those are our rules, so, okay, let's go with the first caller.
Okay, our first caller is Nancy Sutner. Nancy, you are now off mute and you are live in the meeting, and you have two minutes for your comments, welcome.
Thank you, good evening. I've been a Santa Monica resident for 25 years, and I appreciate the importance of a new and responsible development in Santa Monica. I'm speaking tonight to express strong support for the 710 Broadway project, which will be a responsible development that will exceed Santa Monica's expectations. The development will give a beautiful supermarket, and importantly, it will create 280 new residential units, 30% of which will be deed-restricted affordable units, and that will be managed by CCSM, which understands Santa Monica's diverse housing needs. The Tier Two and Tier Three project fulfills the city's DCP and LOSE vision. The project will meet a complete neighborhood goal by providing a new grocery store, a walkable and bikeable environment. Also, the project will give residents at 710 Broadway close proximity to transportation, shops, residence, Palisades Park, and our Santa Monica Public Library. 710 Broadway will reflect a quality developer and an extraordinary architectural firm. Please vote to approve this project. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Our next caller is Valerie Griffin. Valerie, you are now off mute, live in the meeting, and you have two minutes for comments. Welcome.
Thank you. I was well-montzed here through much of the LOSE process. The primary concern we heard from Wilmot residents was potential loss of the Vons at 14th and Wilshire with the proposed activity center. No one mentioned building heights. They wanted their neighborhood grocery stores. Neighborhood grocery stores are essential. We all know there's a tremendous housing shortage in Santa Monica and much of California. Global warming has made our community even more desirable. This means we need lots of housing, and it needs to be taller and denser than some people would like. This brings us to 710 Broadway. This beautiful mixed-use project will provide housing, a fitness center, and other retail while updating an existing grocery store. Including this much affordable housing brings an element of economic diversity to this project and its neighborhood. We all benefit from actual diversity in our own neighborhoods. Keeping this grocery store the center of the development will provide a positive impact for generations. Designing in a fitness center provides another essential neighborhood service, albeit one that was new, that wasn't part of the LOSE. Both the grocery store and the fitness center can serve the economically diverse residents of this development and the neighborhood. If possible, the city should require the fitness center to have an affordable membership tier to make it financially available to people in affordable units. This project encapsulates- This project encapsulates 21st century Santa Monica. It can and should be a vital part of the neighborhood and our city. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next caller is Carl Hansen. Carl, you are now live in the meeting, and you have two minutes for comments. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Landers and Planning Commissioners. I'm Carl Hansen, the Housing Commissioner and Resident, but speaking tonight as the co-chair of San Monica Forward. Forward strongly supports the proposed project at 710 Broadway. We shared a letter encouraging you to move it forward. This project will provide desperately needed market rate and affordable housing, and will support a more vibrant and pedestrian-oriented downtown. The project is also consistent with the vision and policies that have been adopted in our community to encourage the production of the new housing we need. We hope you will approve this important project and move it quickly ahead. Speaking quickly for myself, as a resident that happens to walk to this particular Vons weekly for my groceries, I will be thrilled to see that mechanic service parking lot gone. I think the entrance on Broadway will be really convenient and nice and create the kind of walkable downtown that I think most Santa Monicans want to see. I'd love to see this done at the Vons on 14th Street that the previous caller mentioned. And, you know, as I think about the city trying to meet its Reno requirements, would love to see this at other grocery stores throughout Santa Monica. This is a great way to produce both market rate and affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
The next caller is Zachary Gaidzik. Zachary, you are now off mute and live in the meeting. You have two minutes.
Hello there. Good evening, everyone. My name is Zachary Gaidzik. I'm a lifelong resident of Santa Monica, and I work as a field deputy for County Supervisor Sheila Kewell's office. I'm also a former organizer for Climate Action Santa Monica and a current board member of OPA. However, tonight I am speaking purely as an individual community member. The first point I'd like to make is that we should no longer be afraid to use the word "development", like it's a four-letter word, when it means the creation of something like this project that you will hopefully be approving tonight. The development of a significant amount of high-quality housing and the replacement of a popular but older supermarket is definitely development-forward. It's responsible development that benefits the people of Santa Monica. 710 Broadway is also allowable development. It is the embodiment of the new streamlining rules that were discussed extensively in the community and finally codified by our city council. Look at the site and the surrounding neighborhood. 280 units can easily be accommodated on the site with room for widened sidewalks, a fabulous courtyard, and work-at-home space. And 84 of those units are designated as deed-restricted affordable units. Residents who will live in the affordable homes will include young people starting out in their careers, workers who are attracted to the good jobs and the great minimum wage plus our city has to offer. The affordable apartments will also be occupied by single moms, single dads, and even boomers. Basically, people who keep our city going and contribute to our local economy. We want them to work here and live here. And for the market-rate apartments, they're going to be rented out by our growing segment of middle-class drivers. Many of them have jobs in Santa Monica, and trust me, they're not going to miss the long, boring, and polluting commute if they're able to walk and bike to work. We want the residents of 710 Santa Monica to shop here, too. The Vons, conveniently located downstairs, is going to be the first place for many new residents to spend their dollars. Stock in the fridge, as we know, is job number one when moving day is over. And what a place to shop! Without a doubt, this store will be a showcase for the Vons Company and an attractive ground floor presence. The price point will be community-friendly. And of course, the new residents will also eat and shop.
Thank you. That has been two minutes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next caller is Judy Abdo. Judy, you are now off mute, live in the meeting, and you have two minutes for comments.
Okay, my name is Judy Abdo, and I think most of you know who I am. I am a former council member and mayor of Santa Monica, but I serve on the metropolitan water district board and on the Climate Action Santa Monica Steering Committee. And I chair the EV Subcommittee of the Environmental Task Force, a little-known group. So I want to just talk about how wonderful it will be that there will be EV chargers at this project and hope that it will end up being part of the zero-emission delivery system that has begun to work downtown. So those are really important to me. I'm also thrilled to see the, the open parking lot be gone. Environmentally, as you all know, it's really a problem. And I want to see all those parking lots used for great housing projects like this one. And, and I think the plans for using water that you have are really good, and I hope you will, even as this drought continues, will think of more and more ways to reuse water and recycle water in this project. So I guess that's what I really wanted to say, those issues. And I think that this is a great addition to our downtown. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next caller is Stephen Wellerver. Stephen, you're now off mute and live in the meeting. Welcome. You have two minutes.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Stephen Wellerver. I'm the Deputy Chief Executive for Downtown Santa Monica, Inc. We submitted a letter to you in advance, so I'll keep my comments to you this evening brief. But want to express that we are highly supportive of this project. Thanks to your support and the support of other policymakers here in our community, Lincoln is emerging as a burgeoning residential neighborhood within downtown. And we believe this project with 280 market rate units and 84 affordable units does a great deal to further that new identity for this corridor. Lincoln also serves as a gateway to downtown for people who arrive in downtown, whether on foot, as a pedestrian, as a bicyclist in a vehicle, or on our expo line. Propping Lincoln is an arrival point that signals you've entered downtown, and this is an important project for furthering that gateway image and for being visible to users of all of those modes of transit. Over the many years of creating the Downtown Community Plan and the four years since it was adopted, one of the most compelling images that has stuck with me was the image of this site and the rendering of it as an urban format grocery store as opposed to a suburban format with a surface parking lot. And what was really telling about that image was just how much more vibrancy and pedestrian orientation we could add to this key intersection by reconfiguring the grocery store located on this site. I believe the project before you this evening is a beautiful imagining of that vision. And across the board, a project that embodies the principles of the Downtown Community Plan. For that and many other reasons, we encourage your vote of support on all entitlements before you this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
And our final caller is Matt Stoffer. Matt, you are now off mute and live in the meeting. You have two minutes for your comments.
Good, Chair Landers and Commissioners. This is Matt Stoffer calling on behalf of Santa Monica Chamber of Commerce in support of this project. Members of the applicant team presented this project last month to our Government Affairs Committee and gave us a very detailed presentation. Comments from our committee members and the other chamber members in attendance were overwhelmingly positive. Our members were particularly excited about the high number of affordable units included in this project, especially the percentage for moderate-income tenants, as many businesses in Santa Monica complain that high housing costs serve as a deterrent to attracting and retaining a workforce. Our committee believes this project will be and good for Santa Monica, and the Chamber's Board of Directors agreed and moved last month to formally support this project. We hope you will agree. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes us, right?
Yep, we're done.
Okay, and we'd like to bring the applicant back for rebuttal.
In for, we are so grateful for all the community support. And I am going to turn over this time to Paula, who has a few housekeeping items she'd like to discuss.
Good evening, Commissioners. So sorry for the dry stuff, but there's just a few other edits to the Statement of Official Action that were just cleanup items that were forwarded to staff today. I don't know if they have made it into the revised STOWA. And so we wanted to just bring them up on the screen to double-check, because it's, we can't, we can't tell. And so there's just a few cleanups to those code citations in Condition 24. An important cleanup in B. Most importantly, the clarification that it's no more than 15% studios. And you want to scroll down, Peter? Just a duplicate word, scroll down. And the last item was just there is a duplicate condition, and it wasn't an exact duplicate, and it had some wording that was applicable to a different project, not ours. But again, thank you so much to the commission and to staff for all their hard work on this project, and we're available for questions. Thank you.
Before we go to questions, yeah, hang on just one second, Leslie. I want to make sure that staff is up to date on those changes and just verify that they are, before we, before we go to questions.
Chair, this is Scott again, senior planner. Yes, we have received all of these, and we have incorporated them into a further revision to the draft Statement of Official Action. So yes.
Okay, and I would just like to point out, there was one public commenter who made one specific suggestion about affordable access to the fitness center. And I wanted to find out if you had a response to that. I believe you're providing a fitness center to your residents, but do you have anything you want to say about that?
So yes, you are correct. We have a separate resident fitness center that will be an amenity for the residents of the project. As for the retail fitness, we don't have a tenant yet, but as we get closer to, you know, negotiating with something that is definitely something we can note. We do know that there are, you know, retail fitness outlets out there that do have tiered membership programs. And so that is something that can be discussed at the appropriate time.
Thank you. And for staff, just to be clear, the CUPs that we're doing tonight are not, we're doing an operating CUP for the, for the Vons. Are we doing, if a tenant needed additional use permits, they would have to come back to us for that. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, thank you. Leslie, go ahead.
But we are doing a CUP tonight for the fitness center, right? Does it exceed?
We're doing this EUP because of the length of the fitness center along the.
I understand. I would, I would even go farther than Chair Landers. I would very much like to see you're negotiating a lease with the fitness center that provides affordability for low and moderate income people in the building. I think that's a terrific idea. And if you can arrange that through a lease negotiation, maybe the developer can comment on that. But I just would really like to see good faith effort made for that.
Yes, thank you. We think that is also something we can consider. Unfortunately, without the retailer, we can't commit to it. We'll definitely note that.
Other questions?
Well, I would ask Leslie a question. Leslie question. Leslie, did you just say that you wanted it for the low and moderate income tenants who are in the building?
Oh, yes. Yes.
You know, they already have a free gym in the building, though, right?
Do we know what that consists of?
I, if it's a brand-new bit, we'll let Ms. Yee respond, but I'm going to assume it's pretty high-quality at this point in time.
Okay. Well, that's, that's good.
Yes, we will be providing a resident-only fitness center as part of the amenity space for the new residents.
Thank you, Jim. I take it back, then.
Well, let's, let's, let me suggest, let me suggest the following, since it came up, and we all think it's, there is a good idea in here somewhere. Would it be a welcome amendment to the fitness center CUP to simply state that the applicant shall make a good-faith effort to encourage the fitness tenant to provide membership for Santa Monica residents of all incomes? Or accessible to certain? No.
I would rather see it limited to the residents in the building.
Well, no, I mean, like, the Arroyo folks don't have a fitness center access. Like, there are people on low incomes who live in the neighborhood of the, of the fitness centers. So if we're having a conversation about income diversity in the fitness center, and Ms. Yee said that some, some, some fitness centers offer, you know, income-diverse membership programs.
Okay, I just, I mean, I think there's probably an economic feasibility issue here, so I would, I would.
I'm not requiring it. I'm just, you know, is there language that you could live with? I mean, it wouldn't require you to do anything except try.
Yeah, Chair Landers, I would respectfully like to avoid adding a condition here, just I feel uncomfortable like we're negotiating language, especially because this fitness is only for the length of the frontage. The, the fitness center itself, that this doesn't require it. So I really feel like the length is about the act of design and that the project, applicant team has really addressed that. Thank you.
That's fair.
And the fact that there's a fitness center on site does make a big difference.
It does make a huge difference. Yeah. Okay, other questions for the applicant? I don't see any. So why don't we close the public hearing and go into discussion? With, thanks to Ms. Yee and her team.
Do we have staff questions?
Sure. I would like to, before we get into motion-making, I would like to make sure that we get a list of our recommendations to ARB, because I think a few people have them. And so I don't know if Nina wants to take the lead on that, but go ahead, Leslie.
Can we ask staff questions first?
Yes, I said yes. Good. Go for it.
Okay. I just wanted to affirm what the staff report said, that this project is subject to the Housing Accountability Act. Is that correct?
Actually, that's not correct, because the fact that they're asking for that minor modification for the, for height.
Isn't that a density bonus?
What about the concessions under the State Density Bonus Law? Sorry, thanks for clarifying. This is ridiculous.
So, if I may, there's two pieces to this. The first is, yes, it is not subject to the HAA, as we have discussed, because they did request a minor modification. However, under the HAA, just because it's not subject to the HAA does not mean that you have discretion, that you have, you actually have more discretion. You are free to approve the project if you feel that it is appropriate. It's totally within your discretion to say yes to this project.
That's not my question. My question, my question is whether or not it's within our discretion to reduce the number of units.
Yes, it is. But you don't have to. So if you feel that, you, you may say yes to the project as is, right? The, the second piece is with respect to the density bonus request that you, you read in Ms. Palmer's letter. We did not have direction from council at the time that this was going to hearing on how to apply the State Density Bonus Law. That's what we received last night. So that's where we are. So what is before you, what is before you this evening is what was noticed and what is on your agenda, which is to approve the minor modification, and then the DRP and the CUP. That is what is before you this evening.
So let me understand, the two feet height difference for the supermarket makes this project not subject to the Housing Accountability Act. Is that correct?
Because it does not meet all of the objective standards. Yes.
Wow. The other question I have is, my understanding is there are no minimum parking requirements in downtown, correct?
That's correct, yes.
So we cannot, we cannot tell this developer that we think he needs more parking?
Correct.
It's up to him or her or they to figure out what their, their project's parking needs are, correct?
That is correct, and they have a parking maximum, so they cannot exceed the parking maximums that our code establishes.
But we cannot tell them, other than the maximum, how many parking spaces to park?
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, are there other questions for staff?
I have a question. Well, I have two, well. Regarding the alley and the map and changing the alley so it's an L and not a straight alley. I guess when I went on my site visit, where I really looked around at what was really there and what was being built, and I looked at the neighboring, and it just seems like there's hundreds, literally hundreds of people who are going to need to enter, probably most of the time on 7th Street. It's going to be hard to get to Colorado because of the train. You can only get there if you're. You can only get there if you're coming from the right direction. So I'm just wondering if there was actually consideration to how all of those people are going to access the various parking structures for the various buildings and if it is truly sufficient or if we're just assuming it's going to be.
Well, I can tell you that there's been a lot of study, as indicated in the staff report, of this alley and its reconfiguration. And it's always been a longstanding policy of the city to have access to sites when alleys are available to have that be your primary access point. So it's it's not unusual for this to occur anywhere in downtown with these other larger mixed use projects. The primary focus, of course, was for that, you know, that 90 degree kink in the alley.
Isn't what I'm asking about?
No, but you're asking about just access. And I think we can just rely on the fact that this is a standing policy. You know, mobility hasn't raised any red flags about using this as the primary access point for all of these projects along Lincoln and 7th Street.
Okay, I want to go along with it, but there's a part of me that is feels like this block is a lot denser than any block we've seen before. So I guess we'll find out if it's efficient the hard way. My other experience I had when I walked is I spoke to somebody in one of the retail establishments. I didn't identify myself. I just asked them how the neighborhood was feeling to her now that it had changed so much in recent years. And she just was taught, just got very excited about how dangerous it had become since the riots and, you know, the quietness of COVID. And I'm wondering if there are security concerns about the closing of Vons and having that site be a construction site for a while. And if that is more likely to make the security concerns better or worse. And if the city should or could, certainly not on our advice, but maybe somebody could let them the police know that this is a neighborhood that's going to have a lot of construction sites. You know, 500 Broadway is still under construction. And there's a lot of extra quietude and just to make sure it's safe until this busy activating project is completed. So is that is that something, a message we can send somewhere to make sure everybody wants to leave their house after 5:00?
I could I could tell you that this project is well known amongst the city staff. Everybody's excited about this project. It's been on the forefront of everybody's thought process. And in fact, our director has, you know, very weekly meetings and keeps everybody abreast of all these large projects that are occurring. And the police department is part of those conversations. So they're aware of this project and, you know, there are there will be, you know, measures taken during demolition. And there probably be, you know, fencing off, you know, the site to keep, you know, people from trespassing. So there there will be probably the typical police protocols that will come into play in securing the site and securing the neighborhood during the time of demolition and construction.
Okay. Just for the record, I'm excited about the project too. I'm just trying to make sure all the I Ts are crossed. Anyway, all right, those are my things in my mind. Go ahead. Next.
Any other questions for staff? I I've I've one and I thought about sort of bringing it up after this we took action because it really applies to both the previous project and this one. But I'll ask it here because I think it's a I think it's a relevant concern. The the project we heard before and the project we're hearing now, both of them are making substantial commitments to mobility, to bicycle parking, to bicycle access. And yet both of them have real problems, I will say, in the neighborhood that are not under their control. The 26th Street project, anybody who has walked across Olympic at 26th knows that that is a rather hellish experience and continues to be really a challenge. And and here, as I mentioned earlier, I have biked past this site many times on my bike heading east on Broadway. And it's the one time on Broadway where I feel like eh, I'm not so safe with cross traffic. So my question to staff is, given the developments that are, you know, that we approved and this one that we are considering, is there a commitment on the part of wherever the mobility division lives now to really take a look at the the bicycle and pedestrian, frankly, mobility and safety issues that will arise inevitably with the additional bike and foot traffic that we hope to see at these intersections? And if you want to focus your answer on this project, that's great, but I know that I'm asking it about both.
Great. So, you know, this was although this project is coming along now, the the idea of, you know, the best more pedestrian and bicycle.
You can't hear what you're saying.
Yeah, we can't really hear you.
Oh, sorry.
There we go. That's fair.
So I I was just talking about the the policies and goals in the downtown community plan that fully contemplated the construction of, you know, quite a bit of housing in the downtown. That the VCP is primarily a housing plan. It was has strong incentives in there for housing. And we have extensive discussions in that plan with respect to planning for our pedestrian, bicycle and mobility networks. So all of that was contemplated into VCP and certainly as housing comes online. You know, it's it's always an ongoing effort to ensure that our networks are accommodating the the demand, you know, that is generated by by new housing, increase of people using our public public bicycle way.
So so I'll be specific here at this project, like with the current Vons site. It is and and thank goodness we're losing a curb cut there, right? I mean, to bicycle east on on Broadway, you have conflict with 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 cars entering the lot. And then at the corner of Lincoln and Broadway, eastbound on Broadway, you get cars that are traversing the bike lane to get into the right hand turn lane. And it's and it's been it is no fun. I can tell you it is especially no fun with kids. So if there's going to be a lot of construction going on and the streetscape is already being adapted, the sidewalk scape is already being adapted by, you know, the applicant. If it's if this is approved, is there, you know, cost effective opportunity for staff to take a look at that intersection? Again, this is not attached to the project, but it is the project is implicated in it to make sure that bicyclists leaving the project and entering the project as they head east on Lincoln are not going to get sideswiped by cars that want to turn right. You know, can we kind of look at that and maybe look at that in, you know, have that kind of concomitant with the the construction progress?
Right. So with with any specifically for this project, when when projects are constructed, and you've probably seen this, you know, for other projects that have been under construction or are already nearing completion in the downtown. For any of those sites, they are required to to submit a construction management plan. And that plan includes a temporary traffic control plan, obviously for any impacts on streets. But it is run through both our traffic engineering, mobility division, building and safety, public works, planning. We're all involved in the review of those plans to ensure that through construction, our networks are maintained. I think in the long run, if you're thinking about, you know, most cyclists wouldn't choose Lincoln as their.
No, we're talking about going straight east on Broadway.
Right, right.
Right, and having a car like try to move into the right hand turn lane.
Right. So 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 we do so we do account for those sorts of potential conflicts. That's the reason why we review construction management plans. And, you know, if if the project is having any impact on the right of way, if they're asking to use a lane, we don't really offer that up too easily. You know, optimize its phase, it's it's limited in in nature. And if there is a sort of extensive detour, you know, there's safe rerouting of both pedestrians and cyclists to ensure that any conflicts with vehicles are mitigated.
Okay, I mean, I would encourage you to study a no right on red, both medium term and long term at the intersection just to avoid, just to regulate the the traffic motion there. But, you know, that may not be the best solution. So if you study it, you may find something better. But I just want to register the concern with that that particular stretch and hope that whatever the project is able to accomplish, that we can align with the, you know, we can we can make it safe for residents and and all the other residents alike. So, yeah. Okay, other, are we ready for discussion?
Can we move on to discussion and?
Yeah, I'm hoping we can move on to a motion, but do we have? Do we are? Nina had some concerns about my bike stuff and I believe we have an ARB list. So I'm hoping that maybe we could clear those two things and then get into discussion and motions.
Chair, I could share my screen and it has that proposed condition of approval for the architectural review board to consider, if you want me to share that.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Can we first have our discussion and then talk about all of our go at the end? Because I think, yeah, maybe, I don't know, maybe staff can, you know, how sometimes Jane just shows us a red line and scrolls through and we can all just see what all the changes are so we can make sure that whatever it is each of us wanted in there showed up.
Yep.
Okay, so let's do that at the end.
Okay.
Can work on it. May I talk about the bike thing?
Go for it.
I actually disagree with the idea of having the bikes go in the inner part of the sidewalk. I think they're much safer for everybody and the pedestrians and the world and just as safe for the bike if it's near the curb, especially in this situation where they're suggesting parkways along the edge of the curb. And I kind of wanted to put in for the record, if there's a way we can put it in the STOWA even, our support for that, so when the public works division looks at that use of the sidewalk space where they've transferred a lot of the stuff that is usually near the building that actually blocks the building from the sidewalk and transferring it over to the curb end, I think is a great idea. And I was so excited to see that. And I really think that that's where the bicycles belong too. And that way pedestrians can be near the building, which is built, designed to address pedestrians. I feel all of your comments about that intersection in the bike lane. I think that is the reason that intersection is so crazy. I think most of the danger on the bike has to do with the cars coming out of the parking lot in an entrance that's going to go away. So I'm super excited that that's leaving. But I think the other conflict is just the fact that that intersection is kind of the funnel for everyone moving downtown who's going to head south or even go on the freeway. There's only a few ways out of downtown to head south, and that's one of them. So I also, for that reason, support the parkways along Lincoln. There will never be parking there because it's too important, a drive aisle. And I think the curb plantings will also come traffic on Lincoln. So all of those things put together in my brain and I think they presented a terrific solution to a lot of that. And the conflict that we have to kind of cross over and share, the bike lane and the people who are turning on Lincoln is kind of the last problem left. I feel like a lot of the problems have been solved with this plan. So that's kind of how I would leave it is a lot of the urgency has been settled. And you're talking to somebody who two days ago had to make that left on Lincoln on my bike because Broadway was blocked with construction and roadwork. And I actually rode my bike all the way to Ocean Park on Lincoln.
Oh, wow. Okay, so I I guess I just, I I'm speaking from the perspective of someone who has a bike shopper in the family. And I I, you know, it is a sad, it's a real problem in our city right now. Bike theft is, it is a, it is an epidemic. It is getting worse. It is, it is just arguably out of control. And as and and I think, you know, I know we're on the public record here, but I think it's pretty clear that property theft is not a very high priority for enforcement at the moment because there are other things that require the attention of our police department. So I feel pretty strongly that without secure bike parking for market shoppers, we are going to be in a situation where we are discouraging bike 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 shopping or shopping by bike. And I hear what you're saying, but unless we can find another place for people to park their bikes that is not available for opportunistic theft, I'm, you know, really going to disagree. I don't know, wherever people are going to.
Chair?
Yeah.
Why, why are you, why are you assuming that the building closer to the building is going to be safer?
I'm assuming, I'm assuming that I'm making the assumption that when you are close to the entrance and off of the public right of way, that having a few racks for people for whom this is a concern would essentially alleviate that concern because there would be much more foot traffic, many more eyes on those bikes. And it would prevent someone from coming along the the street with a clipper, reaching over, like literally just reaching over, flipping a lock, grabbing the bike and moving on without ever stepping foot onto the sidewalk. And there's a lot of efficient theft going on.
I I hear what you say, and I absolutely agree that bike theft is is rampant. But I will also highlight to you that I I'm pretty sure we have a problem like this at the library down down on Santa Monica, Main Library. And that bike parking is up off of the public right of way, right in the main travel lanes. People are still doing it. The problem is people are so brazen about doing it and it's so easy when people use weak locks. So I'm not sold at this moment that putting it closer to the building or putting it closer to the curb is a safer situation. I would love to find a safer situation, but.
Yeah, I I think there's a different population hanging out at the, I think you have different, I think you have a different dynamic in the off street rack. I've also, you know, on the in the in that rack at the library, I think there's a different dynamic there.
Can we do, I feel like we were sort of, we've heard everyone's opinion who wants to speak on this. Can we pick a stop hole and make a decision and move on?
Yes, yes.
That's a good idea. I'd also like to point out that the ultimate decision is being left to the mobility division, simply attending to accessibility and visibility. So if we can bring up that, I mean, I think it's a question of whether Nina can live with the language in the STOWA. And then I'm sure mobility would take into account the divergence of opinions here. Because it doesn't actually say off street in the STOWA. It says accessibility and visibility.
Okay, well, let's look at the, let's look at the STOWA and let's move on.
Okay, let's, can we bring that language up?
Yes, yes, I'll share my screen.
Thanks.
So this is condition six.
I mean.
I've that's so vague, it might as well not be here on this.
So can, so given that, Nina, can you live with it?
I can.
Okay.
But I also really like the way it's laid out, so.
Can we move on, please?
I'd love to. If you're, can we, is everybody okay with that language?
Yes.
Okay, then let's keep going.
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I move that we approve the development review permit 20 ENT dash O241.
Hang on, can you can you make a bigger motion, please? And before we vote, can we actually see the red lines, the ARB language?
I have an ARB thing I would like to add.
Yeah.
You can add that to the motion.
Jane?
Sorry, can I just, can I just click?
Sorry, can I just, can I just click? Um, I, I think the order of motions that we need to ask is actually the minor modification first.
That's what I thought.
Then, then your second motion, if you want, you know, you, you could group together the development review permit, the tent, the vesting tent attract map and the CUP as a second one. And then the last one would be the STOWA.
And we, we can't do the minor mod with the DR?
Um, I think it would be best to do that separate since the, um, the DR is dependent on the minor mod.
Okay, and we can do the ARB with the STOWA, right?
Correct.
Okay, so let's, Nina, you good voting? Yes, Leslie's moving the mod. Is there a second?
For the mod? Sure.
Okay, so Commissioner Lambert moves the mod and Commissioner Fresco seconds. Is there a, can we have a roll call?
Wait, can I make a comment about it? Uh, first of all, I've always argued that these maximum minimum heights of that first story are really an impediment and very arbitrary. And we've had a situation now where we see that, you know, to go from 16 or 15 feet to 18 creates this whole other mess. And, you know, we in our, uh, basically review of the housing element, we were even talking about going down to 11 feet. And so I'm saying that in the future, we should remove that ground floor constraint entirely and let nature take its course. And this is just another example.
Amen, Marianne.
Amen. And it, and I want to, and I, I, the staff actually pointed out that best practice here is 20 feet for groceries. Staff went, the staff report had some independent, right? So we're going to 18. Um, okay, let's vote.
Right, Commissioner Fresco?
Yes.
Commissioner Fonda Bernardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert?
Yes.
Commissioner Pastor?
Yeah.
Commissioner Reese?
I support the incentive.
Very good.
And Chair Landrus?
Yes, I support the incentive. Yes. Um, well done, Jim. Uh, okay, is there a motion to approve the DR? The virtual, uh, the virtual, the vesting tentative track map? The, and the, the three conditional use permits, 20 ENT O two four one, O two four, O two sixty-eight, O two four two, O two four three, and O O eight one.
I will make that motion, but I would like to add one more ARB direction with the motion.
Okay, I, I second the motion. I second the motion.
All right, we're going to do that in the STOWA, are we not?
No, no, yes, no. I'm just going to clarify that you're going to want that with your motion. The STOWA is just the record of your proceedings.
Okay, go for it, Nina. Let's look at the red line from staff. Can we bring it up? Moved by Fresco and seconded by Lambert.
Well, I was gonna, I said I made the motion with a new condition, which I'm about to read to you, but everybody is looking. This is what I'm thinking. Okay, the ARB shall pay special attention to the fragmented appearance of the Broadway elevation. Consider limiting the busy or slatted design expression to the corner of Broadway and Lincoln or find another solution that will result in a calmer expression for the Broadway elevation consistent with the Lincoln and Seventh Street elevations.
I don't support that. It's too vague. And frankly, I, I like the way it is now, frankly.
I like the slating.
Yeah.
You can over such a huge area?
I would, I would not second that.
No, I, I like the slating.
It's like Lego-y.
No, it's great.
It's nice from the inside, but it's nasty from the outside. Anyway. I mean, it's nice, it's a nice accent. I don't mean to say it's nasty. That's mean. That's not what I meant.
Well, that's why we have.
Provide your comments to the ARB.
Let us, okay, Nina, are you still willing to stand by that motion without that addition?
I'm, I'm disappointed in you, but yes.
Thank you. I feel, I feel your disappointment. Um, and if you can find an expression of that, that is as vague as my bike thing in the spirit of comedy, you can come along with it. But uh, could we now ask staff to bring up the, the list of ARB stuff that we had mentioned so we make sure it's covered?
Okay, here are the ones that were included as, um, uh, I think this captured everything except the, there was some discussion about seeking a lighter brick color. Uh, so we will incorporate that.
Yeah, can we see some language there?
Didn't we also talk about moving some of the long-term bike parking up to the upper level?
We did. And you know, Jim, if we moved the, if we found bike parking on the ground floor, maybe some of it could be available for shoppers.
No, cause the two parking areas are really isolated.
Yeah, that's true.
You know, and I will, I will say that I've heard some developers say that one of the worst security things for bikes are those bike rooms. Cause once it's in the bike room, they can re.
They're all gone. They're all gone.
How about the ARB will consider a calmer expression for the Broadway elevation consistent with the Lincoln and Seventh Street elevations?
No. Calmer, calmer is too subjective and I like it the way it is.
Um, appropriate. I think we really wanted to say lighter. I mean, lighter.
Well, you shouldn't design the color, design the color.
Well, I'm, my point was that the, my point was that the light, I mean, I discussed with the applicant, which was the consider a lighter, a consideration of a lighter color selection. Yeah, there you go.
That's fine.
A lighter color selection.
For what? The whole building?
No, for the brick, for the brick parts.
Why?
Because if you look at the elevation on Lincoln, you've got this dark color looming over Lincoln and a lighter color will also help them with, um, with heat absorption. It's too dark a brick.
Oh, you Californian. What's wrong with a brick?
I actually like the dark brick, but I'm.
Me too. Yeah, so guys, like in California, everything has to be bright.
We're not gonna. I don't, we're not the ARB.
Yeah, I don't think we should, I think we should leave that to them. That's like a little too.
Leave it out, leave it out.
Yeah, leave it out.
How about just, how about just consideration of color selection for the brick? Leave out light.
They'll do that anyway, Sean.
They're gonna, yeah, that's.
Not next Monday again, meaningless.
Just leave ditch.
I would like to include the bike thing, though.
Yes.
Yes.
It doesn't have to be all of them, just some.
Where, but is that an ARB conversation? That should go somewhere else.
The mobility.
It should go mobility. It should.
Going to different six.
Okay, let's see the other changes.
And I'll stand down on my brick color.
I'm sorry, but before you move on, Chair.
Everybody's losing.
You want to?
I can't hear anybody.
Hang on.
The bicycle condition? Did you want that in condition sixty-six?
Is it six or sixty-six?
What are we talking about?
The bikes.
The bike.
Sixty-six, that's the one, exactly.
Okay, cool.
Want to say to the extent possible, ground floor at grade, long-term bike parking should be identified? Offered?
Provided. Provided.
Provided.
Provided.
Long-term at grade, was it?
Long-term bike parking to be provided at grade.
Provided at grade.
Yeah. Bicycle.
We have an attorney among us who can make sentences.
Hey, let's, we're not saying all of it, though. We're saying a portion of it, right? Cause they have a heck of a lot of, they have a heck of a lot of bike.
Yeah.
Bicycle, it should be bicycle and yeah, to the extent possible.
Some long-term.
A portion of the long-term bicycle parking.
Yeah. Okay. I don't think you need, at grade shouldn't have a hyphen in that sentence.
Thank you.
Where is the Oxford comma?
Don't take away my Oxford comma.
I love that.
Are we ready to vote?
No, I, I, wait, can I just?
Yes, sir.
Anybody want to play along with me? Let's please limit the number of palm trees.
Yes, I agree.
Thank you.
I totally agree with you.
I believe that the city should have no defense of this grass.
They, they, they're, they're aesthetically pleasing.
They are.
They're like one of Daisy's.
Where can we mention that?
ARB.
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 Hey, one second.
Uh, and.
So to the extent those are street trees, those aren't in the, um, ju, within the jurisdiction of either the planning commission or the ARB. That's, those are on public property and that's, you know, a discussion that the city has and makes. It's not incumbent on the developer to make those decisions.
I hear we have a budget crisis. Could we have them sold, please?
Bad. Um, that's fine, but I still would like to make sure they limit their, their use of them on their project.
Yeah.
So how many, are you saying that we can't limit the use of them or are you saying they should go in a different condition?
So it can go in the ARB condition. I just want to make clear that I believe the discussion earlier was actually, um, was actually discussing street trees. And so anything on the public right of way is, you know, not going to be within, be within the jurisdiction of this that is before you. But if you would like to make that, um, you know, as part of the landscaping plan that's actually on the private property that you're discussing, that is something you can do.
So how about this? Can we add a condition that if the act, if the applicant accidentally damages this, the palm trees in the course of construction, that they shall not replace the palm trees?
Okay.
So.
So how about we add something that says to pay picture attention to uh, encouraging or discouraging the use of, discouraging the use of palm trees on the private property.
Yeah. How about, and how about encouraging the use of native shade trees?
I don't know, I don't know what that, I don't know what that means or if it's realistic.
Well, they're planning to put some trees there and, you know.
So I just, um, I just wanted to be clear that when the ARB reviews, um, landscape plans, um, that's, you know, very uh, conventional, they, they already do that in terms of ensuring that species are, are native species. Um, you can thrive on, in, along the California coast.
Right, I was, I added the word.
So, um, can we? So, uh, Jing, did the, the sort of nits and cleanups that Paula asked for, have those been integrated into the conditions or you?
Can I, let me, let me.
I would not ask you even in this very second.
Let me share my screen. So this was, um, what Paula was referring to in terms of, of those changes. And so this is condition number twenty-four. Uh, and we've, we've captured, uh, that, those changes and has to be formatted a little bit, but uh, and it does reflect that. So, um, and we eliminated that one, uh, section that will, um, was duplicative.
Thank you.
Also, let me just, let me just ask you, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. I, I wanted to just make sure you're all in agreement with the project description. Uh, that goes on the, the first page of the.
That's what I was about to ask. Yeah, with, uh, with, um, the non, the coordination with the nonprofit housing developer and the watch for cross-traffic sign. Yeah. Are we good with that?
Yeah.
Can I, can I? Can I ask a question? Is CCSM is actually part of the development team as described in the project description?
Yeah.
So it's already there.
I don't think you want to call them out, Leslie. I think you want to leave it there.
Well, I don't want to put them in here. That's just a question, that's a question of whether they're part of the applicant team. I don't know the.
They are. Their letter was moved from public comment to applicant team letter as they are contracted with the applicant team, but this is there.
Okay, so you answered my question.
With the project.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Can I make a very quick last comment and then can we, oh, um.
Sorry, can I just, for clarity, because, um, on that condition twenty-four, it doesn't appear that those were in red line. So I, I just want to be clear. Um, because it, so if I, I'm just going to share my screen. Um,
Let me stop sharing.
For, for, for condition twenty-four, um, these are, you can see here in the blue red line starting.
Can you make it bigger, Jing?
There you go.
Right here. So you can see there, they're, they're basically type of changes, but I just, um, this is part of the commission's new approach to STOWA. So we just want to be really clear that these are the changes that you, that you were voting upon. Um, you can see here in B for unit mix. And it's, it's largely references to, um, municipal code sections.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And then they cut a bunch of things later on. Was that in? That was, there we go. Yeah, this. Okay, good. Yep. Great.
Okay, so I would just like to say that I think it's pretty amazing that we have this tier three project and we had very little of any opposition. And I want to commend the development team for, I think what was probably good community outreach, or we would have heard better, and for designing a building that I think largely we agree is pretty good, even if there are, you know, little elements here and there. Um, and that it's really exciting that we can approve this tier three project and it's great for our community.
Thank you. I sec, I second that.
Yes, and I, I think. Yeah, I just, I would like to say, I want to say one thing, which is that last night at the, at council's housing element discussion, it came up multiple times from multiple council members that this was a model project. That when we were thinking about the kind of housing that we wanted to produce, especially in downtown, but I also think that this could be a model in Bergamot, if we can deal with the parking. Um, this, this was the model and, um, hopefully the next time we get a project like this, the minor modification that was put before us will be offered as an incentive against the state density bonus. Um, but I, this is exactly what we want and, um, and I, I, you know, I think we are in line here with where our city is, where our city is heading. So, um, yeah. Now we vote?
Let's, let's vote.
Do it.
Commissioner Fresco?
Yes.
Commissioner Fonda Bernardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert?
Yes.
Commissioner Pastor?
Yeah.
Commissioner Reese?
I am going to support this project because for, for the following reasons, and I'm sorry, folks, I do want to do this. Um, there's thirty percent affordable in this project. And if I didn't, like, if I didn't say that once, I want to say it ten times. There's thirty percent affordable. Nobody puts thirty percent affordable on a mixed income project. So this is a fantastic situation for us. This is right in line with everything I want in development, which is density near jobs and transit. And we're getting a beautifully articulated building. We're getting wider sidewalks, getting rid of surface parking lot. And these guys are actually right sizing their parking. So I wholeheartedly support this project.
Amen.
Is that a yes?
Yeah.
And Chair, Chair Landrus?
Amen, and yes. Hallelujah. Um, all right, well, thank you. Um, I think I had more, I think we had more meetings, uh, on this than on anything recently, but we, we need to move now with the STOWA motion. Um, is there a motion to approve the STOWA as revised, as redlined as we've seen?
Don't move.
All right. Moved by Nina, seconded by Leslie. Can we have a roll call?
Commissioner Fresco?
Yes.
Commissioner Fonda Bernardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert?
Yes.
Commissioner Pastor?
Yeah.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
And Chair Landrus?
I confirm that amen and hallelujah was said, yes. Um, all right, well, thanks to, thanks to the team. Uh, and, uh, we wish you luck in your next phase of this project. Uh, with that, we have no written communications, no public comment. I want to remind everyone, I do want to say for the record, um, because I noticed this during the prior, the, the item, I had brought up an ARB direction, um, but neglected to put it in this, in the DR or the STOWA having to do with the, uh, possible artwork, uh, this, the mass timber artwork on Twenty-Sixth Street. Um, so unless anybody has a very strong objection, it'll be, you kind of mentioned as part of the discussion, it's not part of the action. Uh, but I did want to note that I had neglected to, to take care of that. Um, and please do, please do, uh, get Melissa your availability through October. They own us uh, for the foreseeable future. Thank you, everyone, and, uh, uh, we will see you now, I think we are adjourned now until the 7th of July. Uh, and with that, uh, good night.
Night.
Good night.